Good evening, everyone. Good evening, good evening, good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the City Council Session of February the 7th. Thank you for coming to City Hall. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Yes, we'll start with Councilmember Ashby. Warren. Harris. Hanson. Shanir. Gera. Jennings.
Here.
Carr. And Mayor Steinberg.
Okay.
We do have a quorum. This meeting is broadcast live this evening and there is a replay on Saturday at 7:00 PM on Metro Cable Channel 14. If you have a cellphone, please silence it. Speaker's slips are located in the back. If you wish to speak, please complete one and turn it into the Assistant Clerk at the front. We also have cordless microphones and assisted listening devices if you need one. And I would like to take a moment to encourage everyone to use our new e-comment function that is a web and Granicus function for you to weigh in and to give your comments to the elected officials for any agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So we will now move to our Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like a young man who's eight years old. He goes to David Lubin Elementary School. He's an incredible young man who happens to also play for the Texas Rangers in his area, and he's a proud member of District 6. None other than Mr. Jackson Robison, Jackson Christian Robison. Come on up, Jackson.
(applause). Speak really loud. (inaudible). I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.[124.42][124.42](applause).
So, Jackson, Jackson, tell me, what's the best thing you like about 3rd grade?
It is pretty fun, and you get to learn your multiplication tables, your division, and your cursive.
Okay, okay, and your cursive, huh? And what about David Lubin Elementary School? What do you like about that? Who's your best friend in school?
Um, Lila.
Lila. Okay. 3rd grade, right?
Yeah.[162.34][162.34](laughter).
Okay. And what do you like about the school the best?
Uh, it's really fun.
That's good. So, school should be a place of learning and also should be one that's really fun. Ladies and gentlemen, give a round of applause to Jackson.[183.12][183.12](applause). And now it is my pleasure to present the Mayor of Sacramento, Darrell Steinberg.[195.12][195.12](applause).
I think I'm going to enter after the Pledge of Allegiance every week. That's very nice. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Welcome, everybody, to the City Council. Thank you, young man, for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And let us begin here with a closed-session report. I do have something to report, Mr. City Attorney. I am very pleased and proud to announce that the City Council, this afternoon, by unanimous decision, decided to make the gentleman sitting to my left, Mr. Howard Chan, the permanent City Manager for the City of Sacramento.[234.62][234.62](applause). We will present the specific details of the contract next Tuesday in public session, but it is a three-year contract, and we expect Howard to be our City Manager for a long, long time. And let me just express as the new mayor how excited I am that Howard has agreed to accept this permanent assignment. When he was appointed as the interim City Manager, I know everyone went around and spoke about him in the most glowing of terms, that this is a gentleman who has the trust of everyone, who is an absolute problem solver, and who is a collaborator in the best sense of the word. And in my short time here at City Hall, I have found all of that to be true and so much more. And so it didn't take me long, you know, knowing that the chemistry between a mayor and a city manager is very, very important, right? Under this system of government, for our city to be able to move forward, you know, within a very, very short time, I said, "This is the person for the City of Sacramento." And we're just really, really pleased and very, very proud of you, and, you know, I hope you'll sign the contract. That's all I got to say.[339.41][339.41](laughter) All right? So, thank you, of course, please.
How do I do this? I don't get the request to speak very often.
There you go.
Mayor Steinberg, members of the council, I am humbled that you've asked me to help lead our phenomenal organization here, and just incredibly grateful. And I will work tirelessly with our phenomenal city staff to help carry out faithfully this council's vision. And so it's been such a phenomenal ride, and with only the best to come. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Howard.[377.12][377.12](applause). All right. I know you all share the same feeling and affection, and we'll have many opportunities to say thank you and to work together, Howard. So, let's get started. Okay. Let us move to the consent calendar. Are there any items on the consent calendar that any member of the council wants removed? If not, are there any, is there any public testimony on items on the consent calendar?
Mayor, there are a few who have signed up to speak, and in addition to that, I do have one change to read into the record on item number seven. It is for the ordinance that's relating to the citywide transportation development impact fee. And that change, if you'll bear with me, is slight, but in Section C of 18.56.340, item four should be changed to read "Development in any area exempted by agreement and only to the extent exempted by the agreement and/or not subject to the transportation development impact fee." And then adding number six, secondary dwelling units as defined in Section 17.108.050. Should be noted that this is a pass for publication only and will appear for public discussion and a vote next week.
So, there is time for the public to review that change that you just described and read into the record.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, that's the only change that I have and the speakers that we have?
I do have Councilmember Geta who's...
I'll go after the speaker.
You'll go after the speaker.
Okay.
Very good. So, let's take the public testimony on their respective items, please.
Okay, so, item number four, we have Mac Worthy that has signed up to speak. That item is the 2016 Monthly Investment Transaction Report. Mac?
Good afternoon, panel. On these type of items, there should be some type of system set up when you said invest money. And then you've got another item speaks to the budget. The public should be able to identify how much money these investments made and how worth it backed into the Treasury Department. We should have that information instead of just saying, "We invested." What did you invest in? What was the return? The public should be able to find that instead of going through a whole bunch of paperwork. When these things say a monthly investment, it should be, that month should be there. Simple, that you could call anybody in the accounting and say, "What was the investment? How much was invested? And what's the return? And how many years that investment go?" We've had some investments fail through here, and somebody else caught them. So, these are the type of things that we should, these are the type of things that we should be able to do with the accounting. The accounting is simple. You've got a lady here that's an expert, and it wouldn't be hard for her to put it into there, how that is put in, because you are saying, "We invested." People want to know what you invested in, how much you invested, and what is the return, and what is the number of years that investment going to be.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy.
Okay, we have three people that have signed up for item number five, which is a pass for publication of the 2131 51st Street Rezone Project. First speaker is Stephanie Robinson, followed by Julie, I believe it's Pan, and then Sandra Sylvester. Stephanie?
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Stephanie Robinson. I am here with several of my neighborhoods, neighbors, who are also representing several of our other neighbors in the Elmhurst neighborhood. I live on 50th Street near V Street, where I've lived with Jackson and my youngest son for nearly seven years. And there are many reasons why we love this neighborhood. It's a beautiful community. The, one of the most appealing things about it is that it is residential, and our children can play with their friends and walk to their friends' houses. There are many families like mine in the neighborhood and many others that choose to move to our neighborhood strictly because it is a residential neighborhood. So, I fear for their safety if we have this rezone. It brings more congestion and traffic to an already fairly congested and sometimes even unsafe intersection because of its proximity to the hospital and that cottage mart being located right on the same corner. So, we also have, our neighborhood is very walkable and bikable. A lot of people walk to work, ride their bikes to work, walk to Trader Joe's, or many of the other social activities and amenities that we have within walking and bicycling distance. So, we're already sort of meeting that parameter that we're being asked to go to. We've collected 460-plus signatures opposing this, and I don't see how it serves our community in a useful way. It's not going to reduce VMTs. Rich Casno and his employees are not going to be living there, so they're still going to be commuting. And I don't see what purpose this serves for our community. I think we would be far better off leaving it residential because it provides much-needed housing for our community.
Well, thank you. So, this is a pass for publication item, which means it will be coming back for a full hearing to the City Council. Is that the way it works?
Yes, it is, uh-huh.
Okay, so you will have a, I think it's very helpful, then, as we consider this, in when, two weeks, or...
February 14.
February 14, which is next week, when we consider this for a vote, we'll take your testimony, and you're welcome to come back next week as well.
Okay, and he had something briefly that he would like to say, if that's okay? Do you still want to say what you were going to say?
Go ahead, young man.
Remember what you thought? Don't be nervous, just say what you thought.
I want to keep my neighborhood residential because it keeps it peaceful and quiet, and I don't want to get run over walking to my friend's house.[734.12][734.12](laughter).
A reasonable, a reasonable request.[737.12][737.12](laughter).
Thank you.
Thank you.[740.12][740.12](applause).
Thank you.[742.12][742.12](applause).
Okay, very good.
Okay, our next speaker, then, is Julie.
Thank you, City Council. I'm also one of many opposed to the rezoning of this property. We know you aren't voting on this until next week, but we wanted to make sure that you know how serious the matter is for the residents of Elmhurst. The residential office option, or RO, is simply not restrictive enough for us. Once the realty office is vacated and the property sold, that corner can be any sort of office within the RO designation with no limit on operating hours or number of employees. I ask the council to consider, what are the benefits of an RO rezone to the residents of Elmhurst? In fact, there are no benefits accruing to Elmhurst residents at all. All benefits accrue to the applicant, who does not live in our neighborhood. Unless the council will place stricter conditional uses on the ordinance, it will actually threaten the traditional neighborhood quality of Elmhurst and increase vehicle miles traveled. This directly defeats the city's goal of preserving traditional neighborhoods. I would like to challenge the council to point to a residential neighborhood in Sacramento, solidly zoned R1 like Elmhurst, that actually exceeds our walkability and vehicle independence, where so many residents walk and bike to work at UC Davis or use light rail downtown such as myself. We don't need rezoning to accomplish this goal because we're already there. I would like to remind the council that the applicant purchased the property knowing full well it was zoned residential. Residential office ordinance, as currently proposed, opens the door for more non-residential zoning to spread through our neighborhood. We view this as a serious threat. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
Sandra?
Thank you, City Council. I want to just start by saying how proud I am to be part of Sacramento, which is a sanctuary city. With that being said, now, about our rezoning, the other speakers have mentioned that, or I will mention, that we're already a mixed-use neighborhood. Many, many people who live in Elmhurst have home offices or home businesses, and it's a, it's a very, and they do that under the residential zoning. The other thing that is happening very soon is the pink AT&amp;T building, which is the famous pink building on the corner of Stockton and T Street, is going to be torn down, and in its place is going to be a couple hundred apartments targeted to the UC Davis community. And then along S Street, which is the parking area for that whole street, is going to be, I think, 23 townhomes. On the bottom floor of where the apartments are going to be, there's going to be 3,000 square feet of retail space, which they want to put in something like a sell-ins market or some sort of a place where people can get sandwiches and deli-type thing. So, already, Elmhurst is a mixed-use area. We're already bikable and walkable, and the neighbors want to keep it the way we are. And we have businesses there, but they're under the zoning that we already have, which is the R1 zoning, which we'd like to keep R1 zoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Look forward to seeing you all next week, too. Go ahead.
Our last speaker on the consent calendar is for item number 15. It's Pastor Gainsborough. Now, item 15 is the contract for the fire station 16 standby generator.
Good evening, Pastor.
Evening, Mayor and Council. First off, I want to start by congratulating on the six-hour meeting, historic meeting that the whole city should know about last Tuesday night, which ran from 6 o'clock with all of the county supervisors, all of the Sacramento council members, and the mayor, meeting historically for the first time ever, dealing with the issue of homelessness. I think that was very commendable, and your courage to say, "We will hear whoever wants to speak," says something to the entire city, so I want to commend you on that. I'm in favor of the proposition for the generator for fire station number 16, totally. Whatever the fire department needs, whatever the police department needs, I've spoken here before saying that their pay salary should be commensurate with Rockland, Roseville, or anywhere else, so that we don't lose the best workers that we have in our city. I want to congratulate Howard Chan on being appointed and invited to be the City Manager. I appreciate both of your meekness. I just wanted to tie up with whatever time I have left, just that I wanted to congratulate you on the new 11th Street shelter just down the street. And I counted the people that were outside of it tonight before it opened. It had 18 when it opened two weeks ago, and I really congratulate and commend you for that. The next night it had 40, and then it had 18 more than it could handle. There were 60 out there tonight, so 20 will be turned away. So, I'm just looking for more shelters. I know that's in your heart. I congratulate you on what you're doing.
Thank you, and more announcements on that front to come this week. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Geta on the consent calendar.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank all our Elmhurst residents and Jackson for your, your participation and your salute today. I know we've worked pretty long and hard on this with, and there's more to come on the, on item five of the resolution. I know it's passed for publication today, but now more than ever, I think community engagement is something that we need in all levels of our government, so thank you for being out here today. On, I do want to just, I know we're also, this is passed for publication, so within the next week before this item comes back up, on the second dwelling unit ordinance, there was an issue I brought up during ledge and law about a constituent on Morley Way regarding the second dwelling unit, and ensuring that we appropriately, appropriately respond to the concern of us billing somebody for a service they haven't received. I want to make sure that we're not billing people if they haven't received a service, whether it's a meter or garbage utility or whatnot. And I think that new policy, we're going to discuss in more detail. And with that, I'd like to move the consent calendar.
Moved, moved and seconded, thank you very much. We do have one additional speaker on the consent calendar who got in just under the wire here, so...
David Andre for item number 18. That's the contract for the Park-on-Parking Pay Machines.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Congratulations, Mr. Chan. The one thing with this parking meter thing that I've observed midtown is that on days when there's free parking, nobody knows that. The money still goes into the current meters, and then people call the number on it because it won't print them a receipt. And on 17th and I, there's parking meters there. I'm there like every day, and I watch these people frustrated. They get very mad. Not a good way for people to come in and spend money in our city, right? That that be looked into, why on days when the parking meters are shut off, they're still charging, then the people don't get a receipt. Along with that, I'd like to see if in that contract, there couldn't be a way that there's a chip or a type of card that say elderly, disabled, and homeless people could have to park in certain zones in our city where it's safe to park during certain hours. That would be like a safe parking zone-type thing that I hope to see on the agenda later. Thank you.
Thank you so much.[1256.33][1256.33](applause). David, all right, we, we have a motion and a second on the consent calendar. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The measure passes the consent calendar. All the measures pass on a nine-to-nothing vote. File item 29, I understand the, the, excuse me, let me turn back. File item 26, which is a smud station A, is being continued. Is that correct?
I have not heard that.
So, it says...
Says being continued, in very clear handwriting on my agenda.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay. I'm sorry, you're right. Need a motion, thank you. I'm awake.[1293.24][1293.24](laughter).
Okay, so, without objection, file item 26 is going to be continued.
We do have one speaker on the...
For very important reasons that I'm not sure of.
I don't even...
Let's, let's hear from Mr. Worthy on this item. Do we take public testimony when an item has been continued?
Not typically.
No, then we're not going to on this one, Mr. Worthy, I'm sorry. We'll wait till the next one. Okay, so, 26 has been continued. We now move to the heart of the evening here, and I want to welcome Supervisor Phil Serna, who I know is going to testify, yes. Oh, on continuing the item, I apologize. Okay, a motion to move to continue by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Harris. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The item is officially continued. Okay. Item 27 now, which is the heart, the heart of the evening. And let me tell you, there are a few items where, where the issue of youth is, are included. So, file item 27 is not an action item per se, but it's a direction item, but I think it's the heart of what we want to discuss here tonight. When we get to file item 29, there will actually be some action items that, with the passage by the council, will begin kicking off the youth agenda that we discuss in file item 27. So, let me, if I may, I know Mr. McKeever is going to present file item 27. I know where Mike here is. He's coming. Well, while, while he enters the chambers here, let me make a couple of opening remarks. First of all, I want to thank Councilmember Shanir and his entire staff, who have worked a long time to bring this item to the City Council agenda. I know parts of it were heard back in October, but this is a, I think, a seminal moment for our city. I know I ran for office on a platform in part of saying that, as we grow our economy, that we must connect that growth to our youth, and that this must be a city foreign about youth. And that because of the Great Recession and, and a lot of issues, we really have fallen back in many respects. I think we all agree in our focus on youth. And tonight, we have the opportunity to begin, and I emphasize "begin" because all of these agenda items in these first weeks are not the end of the agenda, we're going to keep coming back to this, are an opportunity to make clear our city's priorities. And what Councilmember Shanir is bringing forward here tonight, and what I'm bringing forward, we're all bringing forward here, is a, not a brand-new direction, but call it an adjusted direction, where we ensure that our city is organized in a way that everything we do, everything we do includes the question, how is this going to benefit the youth of the greater Sacramento community? And I think we're doing this in the right way. We want to provide direction about how we can take the item you're going to hear tonight, how we can make sure that we get it right over the next couple of months, and come back to you for essentially a budget action, so that we kick off the beginning of the next fiscal year with a, a, an adjusted direction and a structure that supports that direction. And finally, I just want to say, to open here, that talked many times about trying to reorient the city service delivery model to a neighborhood services model. This is a big part of that. This is a big part of that. The centerpiece of our neighborhood services strategy needs to be around how we invest in young people. So, let's have at it, Mr. McKeever. Got a lot of people who've shown up tonight. We want to hear from all of you. I would say that as we begin public testimony, that you're all welcome to speak for allotted time, but, you know, sometimes brevity is a good thing, and, you know, me, too, is sometimes as significant and powerful as repeating what somebody has already said. So, don't repeat what I just said, please.[1575.83][1575.83](laughter) Mr. McKeever.
Mayor Steinberg, members of the council, City Manager Howard Chan. You're going to need a new sign. I will be, I will be brief. You know that while the city's doing much for its children and youth, there is much more that can be done. I have a hunch you will hear many details about that in the testimony this evening. The good news is, you all know this, decades of very solid, credible research shows meaningful positive outcomes could be delivered, both to the youth and your entire communities, through positive interventions and services to youth throughout. Mayor Steinberg alluded to three items that are in play in your midterm budget actions. One of them is, has already been forwarded from the Budget and Audit Committee, which is a $950,000 match for interns to a grant that the city received about a month ago from the state. Two others are under discussion that have to do with establishing partnerships with the school districts on beacon schools or their equivalent and relevance in, in districts, and enhanced programs that Chris Conlon has teed up in the Parks and Recreation Department. Those will be coming to you in some form very soon. But beyond those three short-term tangible actions, tonight is your chance to send a clear message of your enduring commitment to this very important issue and to dive, set in place a process to dive into some very important systemic issues about how to ensure that there's a lasting structure in place for this. Specifically, we are asking the council to give direction to the City Manager to establish a multi-sector team, representatives from your council and your staff and his staff, and input from key stakeholders as appropriate along the way to dive into the systemic issues of organizational structure, financial commitment, needed personnel, and functions of your commitment to youth. A little bit, and no actions will be taken until they come back to the council. So, you're setting a process in motion. You're not dictating answer tonight. A quick, a little bit of quick history, I think, is appropriate. On October 13th of last year, your Law and Ledge Committee recommended, forwarded an ordinance related to a youth department and a funding structure to the council. And at the incoming mayor's request, you were kind enough to put that on hold so that the new council and mayor could take that up. And so this is the next step after that. And what's in front of you tonight is a concept that is different in a couple of important respects from the ordinance from last October. One was, one is the funding issue. There is not a dedicated funding source prescribed in what's in front of you. There is clearly a concept that it is important to establish strong and sustainable funding to honor your commitment to youth, but there's not a dedicated funding source. And secondly, there was a youth department specifically included in the prior recommendation, and to honor that commitment there, the language in your staff report, you know, is carefully written. There is clearly a concept that it is important to establish strong and sustainable funding to honor your commitment to youth, but there's not a dedicated funding source. And secondly, there was a youth department specifically included in the prior recommendation and to honor that commitment there, the language in your staff report, you know, is carefully written, that at the outgo, there is a presumption that that is the appropriate idea, but if there's not a dictate that that be the answer. And all other alternatives reasonable will be analyzed objectively during the process before the recommendation comes back to you. And I should also point out that there's more than one way to create a youth department. One is to create a new department and one is to evolve an existing department with Parks and Recreation being the obvious consideration there. So that's my hopefully brief enough introduction and hear from your people.
Well, I think maybe the most important part of tonight's meeting is to hear from the public and especially to hear from the youth who have been organized here and, excuse me, have been organizing themselves. And I hope that, you know, this won't be, we see many familiar faces, but for those of you who are here for tonight's meeting, I hope this will not be the last time you are here because your input on these sets of issues and frankly, all issues affecting the city are necessary and welcome. And so keep organizing and we look forward to hearing from you tonight. But we want to, first, because we know he has a very busy schedule as the first speaker tonight, want to invite our colleague, Supervisor Phil Serna. You know, we are making a habit of spending Tuesday nights together.
We are, but it's a good habit.
This one, but the difference is you don't have to stay here till midnight if you don't want to, so welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Steinberg and members of the council. If I look a little, little fatigued, it's just because I stepped out of my own eight-and-a-half-hour all-day board hearing two blocks down the street. But I wanted to make sure that I did everything I could to be here tonight to offer very strong support in my capacity, not only as a very fortunate and honored county supervisor who overlaps, whose district overlaps with six of the eight city council districts and certainly enjoys a partnership, working partnership with this entire city council and looks forward to an even better day, working with, with the largest city in our county, but also in my capacity as Chair of the First Five Commission. I want to make sure that that's clear. You should be in receipt of a letter that both the Executive Director Julie Galalo and I co-signed, expressing our very strong support for two of the initiatives, and I want to speak to three, but two of the initiatives in front of you tonight, and that is strong support for the Sacramento Children's Fund and certainly the establishment of a youth department. I think it's fair to say that, especially for those that may have been to the, to the convening we had just a few weeks ago at the Sacopulous Library, this community, not just the county, not just the city, but our entire region, and in some aspects, the state of California, is looking at declining revenues, at least those administered through our First Fives, because we burned through our reserves during the, during the hard recession years to do all the good things that I think run parallel and are very well-aligned with the initiatives in front of you tonight. That's going to mean that we all kind of have to figure out how to pick up the, pick up the slack a little bit. So I'm very, very encouraged to see the initiative, especially the leadership of Councilmember Chenier on, on this particular effort moving forward. I want to finish with express support for Mayor Steinberg. And as was referenced in his opening remarks in terms of the platform he ran on and certainly living up to that platform and going beyond it to make sure that this, this city's youngest people have all the, the opportunities that we all believe they should have to learn, to be well-educated, to have recreational resources, but certainly to also have those job opportunities and not wait until you're out of college, but actually begin to groom them as you approach college in your teen years. So I want to end with my express support for that initiative as well and certainly would be open to any questions you might have.
Do we have any, any questions? No, we just want to express our appreciation for you coming out of your meeting and coming over here, Phil, because we're partners.
Absolutely.
On a whole host of issues and.
I couldn't agree more.
And, and you know, whether we do it in formal joint meetings or not, we're working together all the time on a common set of issues and we know where your heart, your head, and your, and your actions are, so thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Anybody else? Okay, very good. Thank you. Excellent. Let us, now we have a lot of public testimony here on this item. Again, everyone is allotted up to two minutes. We do that not because we wouldn't want to hear from you for longer, but we want to make sure that everybody has the ability to be heard, but you don't have to take the full two minutes. Brevity is good, so go ahead, Shirley.
So we'll call three at a time so that we can be prepared to make this a little bit more efficient. We're going to start with Maribella Smith, followed by Natasha Roberts, and then it looks like, uh, Jap, Talon Khan? Joe. All right, got it.
Welcome, welcome.
My name is Maribella Smith and I was saved by 916 Inc. As a teen, I never really felt like I belonged in the world around me and this is a unique story. Most of my peers felt exactly the same way. But I was hungry for a home and I was determined to find a place where I could grow and where I could help the people around me grow as well. This was a couple of years ago. 916 Inc. was a baby at this time, but we shared and still do share the same fire. They didn't just give me a home, but they also gave the students around me a home as well, especially where we never thought to look before, which was our pen and paper. I have them to thank for my confidence in opening up doors that would have never even have existed if not for them. I even work there now. 916 Inc., the Boys and Girls Club, they deserve funding because it's our responsibility as a community to support our youth and I think this will make Sacramento stronger as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Excellent testimony.
Natasha?
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
You can say welcome.
Welcome. I stand here as a parent and I want to say that nearly two out of three children are not at grade level reading. More than 60,000 school-age children right here in Sacramento are not reading at grade level. We, the Sacramento Public Library Foundation, are funded 100% by donors, by individual donors, and the Sacramento Public Library's 28 locations to help all kids achieve grade-level reading. The bottom line is, we want all kids to read. In seven years, our support for summer reading has increased the number of students finishing the program from 500 to 5,000. And the library's reach, although it's enormous, we still need, we still need help and our, and we need to find all of those kids that are unable to read. Our solution is a digital literacy map that will produce an annual literacy report card. And the foundation, I stand here today to say that we are investing in Sacramento's youth and we are eager to partner and collaborate with everyone. Thank you.
Whatever we do, you want us to ensure that we evaluate, that we have data, and that we actually demonstrate with the investments we intend to make that we're going to make real progress on behalf of our kids.
And we want to work with you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Joe. Following Joe will be Tommy Lee, followed by Chang Tao.
Pastor Joe Talakon, History Ministries. I also work with cops and clergy and I also work with Nightlife Turned Right, Councilmember Warren and Darryl Roberts out in Del Paso Heights. Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Chenier, I appreciate everything that you guys do. Other council members, I haven't had the opportunity to work with you yet, so I don't know really what you're doing, but I know that you three gentlemen, the youth are on your heart and you're doing all you can. The one thing that I want to talk about tonight is Nightlife Turned Right. We've done it two years now in Del Paso Heights. The first year was wonderful, the second year was also wonderful. We need to continue this throughout the year, not just during the summer. I mean, it brought peace into the neighborhood, it brought youth out to us at night. It took us a couple of years to gain a relationship with these young people and that's all that these young people are seeking, is relationship, to be acknowledged and to be loved on. And we have to do that year-round, not just for two or three months or, or four months or whatever it may be. We have two community centers out there, Hagenwood and Robertson Community Center. We need some funding to open these community centers up every day so we can do something with these kids every day. There are two beautiful buildings sitting there that we could have people out there in the afternoons when they get out of school, on Friday or Saturday nights, we can be doing things. I'll come out there, I don't want no money, I just want to be able to bring our youth in, to be able to spend time with them, to build a relationship with them and to let them know that it's not the streets that they have to go to. Mayor Steinberg, congratulations. Mr. Chan, congratulations. Mayor Steinberg, I love you.
Thank you.
And I've got to say that because I got to meet him a few years ago at the synagogue through E Bay C. And, but also I got to speak with him at a lunch, NOK lunch with Mo Mahana and we spoke about the mentally ill and not long after you brought in the Steinberg mentally ill and I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you, Ray.
Hey, Tommy Lee. Following Tommy then is Chang Tao and Connie, it looks like, Tao.
Please feel free to line up if you will because it'll allow us to move through a little more efficiently. Thank you, welcome.
Is it working?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, city council members. My name is Tommy Lee and I'm a senior at Huron Justin High School. I'm a resident of the Old Park area and I strongly feel like we do need a beacon center around. Many centers don't really do what they tend to do when they like, like build up. Growing up in Old Park, I have seen and been through many things. Every kid growing up in a poverty area don't want to do bad things. It only caused by the help they get, which is basically nothing. I grew so accustomed to how everyday living is like. Growing up, I would always hear a helicopter fly around in a circle telling everyone to go inside.
Slow down a little bit because we want to be, seriously, because we want to be able to hear you, really. What you're saying is really important, so we want to hear it, okay?
Okay.
Slow down.
Okay, I'll stop. So I grew.
You're good, don't, I, I understand you're nervous, but we, I swear to God, we really want to hear what you have to say, okay?
I grew so accustomed to how everyday living is like. Growing up, I would always hear a helicopter fly around in a circle telling everyone to go inside because they have, they have police on the ground with dogs. It was the usual thing to see and hear shootings, seeing people being gunned down, seeing fights every day. Every kid in poverty just wants to have money. I know people who sold drugs just to get money and now they've been locked up for over a year now. With one of the priority to give out more jobs for youth, it could be, also prevent them to do bad things for money. Many people see a ghetto kid and say they ain't worth anything without trying to lend a helping hand. Many people are so quick to blame people for doing bad things, but forget to look at what could have prevented it. With a beacon center, it should be assured that it could have, it should be assured it could be a place where anyone could belong in. It should be run by people who actually want to help a youth, well, a youth out with anything. I would like to see it show kids at a young age to do the right thing. That would be a start of stopping violence among youth. If they are shown right at a young age, then when they get older, they won't do the wrong things. The way I see it is that people need to stop blaming us youth who gets in trouble for everything and blame themselves as to why it is happening. So these, these priorities is a start for people like yourself to realize that you've been neglecting us for so long and you, and you want to make a change. My name is Tommy with E Bay C. and thank you for listening.
Youth. Thank you very much, Tommy. Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening, Mayor Darryl Steinberg and city council members. My name is Chang Tao and I am a senior at Luther Burbank. I'm here today to speak upon youth employment and youth employment is very important for us juniors and seniors because we are at a stage in our lives where we are transitioning into adulthood. And youth employment, they provide that work, work experience and the money we need for our future needs such as college. And so these, you, these internships and jobs, they should revolve around community-based work, as Eric Guetta was saying, right? That community engagement right now is very important and it's something that we need to focus on. For example, I've been in E Bay C. for about two years now and we've been focusing on a lot of community work. In 2015, we tried canvassing for Measure Y, which is a medical marijuana tax. Sadly, that did not pass and the following year in 2016, we canvassed and advocated for Measure G, a partial tax, which also did not pass. And that's why this year, I'm here today to speak upon youth employment because Children's Fund has been canceled. And so with this youth employment, they provide a lot of opportunities for us youth. For example, I come from a low-income family and, and some nights, I have a hard time supporting my younger siblings because I don't work right now. My father, he works 12 hours from 2:00 in the morning to 2:00 in the afternoon. And so on some nights, there are no food for my younger brothers to eat and I would go up to 99 cent store to go buy some snacks for the night. And you know, if there were more, more jobs and internships that are revolving around community-based work, that would be great. Thank you for your time for listening and.
Thank you.
Hello and good morning, everyone. My name is Connie Tao and I am a senior at Grant Union High School. I am also from District Three. I strongly support having youth employment and a beacon center because from past experience, I did not have a place to be after school. I was peer pressured into smoking marijuana, hanging out with the wrong crowd and ended up getting suspended. I have also ditched school because I didn't have resources to reach out for, making me fall behind classes and close to wanting to be, wanting to be a dropout and give up in school. Resources like E Bay C. has helped me because I have peers and mentors that will help push me to be more motivated. And I also have gotten, I also received an opportunity to be a paid intern and this has helped me a lot because I have struggled, having my own money because I did not want to ask my parents because they were struggling themselves. Once again, my name is Connie Tao and I am from Grant Union High School, a part of the Youth Action Team with E Bay C. Sacramento. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for telling your story, it really is.
Our next three then are Joseph, it looks like Thac, T-H-A-C, then now Chi Hr and Dexter Escala. It's Joseph.
My name is Joseph Tao. I'm a U from E Bay C. Well, I was growing up in Old Park where I was struggling and there was no resources that would help me and guide me all the way. And through my life in the youth age, I've been struggling a lot through bullies and no supportive. So I've been in and out of juvenile halls and been in probation and where, when I got out, so there's no one to guide me like E Bay C. where they came in my life. So basically changed me who I am today. And I just want to let people know that it's really good to now to support our youth to get on the right path. And our youth is our future and I just want to let everybody know that we need to support our youth to stay on the right track. And instead of going to my direction when I was as a youth, and I just, I just want to like to thank to E Bay C. that they helped me to get, to help me back on my feet and where to go on the right path. That's it, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Nutri Hr. I'm a senior at Grant Union High School. I support the youth employment because E Bay C. Sacramento was the first nonprofit organization that changed my life and gave me an internship. Before, before joining E Bay C. and receiving an internship, I used to ditch a lot sophomore junior because there was no program that gave me a motivation to go to school. As a result of ditching, I missed a lot of school days, behind all my credits, received true letters and my grades were below average, which resulted to a 1.33 GPA. I was to the point of not graduating and transferring to a continuation school. I then met a counselor named Deena Vang who introduced me to E Bay C. She made me realize what I really can do in the future, such as going to college or joining the Marines. I also realized that I had everything while I was growing up. I was the one who blinded myself and took my own path to being a failure. Without E Bay C., I would be in a continuation school or a dropout. I would never have a chance to meet new friends or a new family. I probably wouldn't even be here today to speak in the behalf of youth programs. In addition, if there was more. addition, if there was more youth employment programs in our community that could actually reach out to youths like me, then they would have a better future and a better education. Now I am on track to graduating from Grant Union High School and from my Criminal Justice Academy. I learned from my mistakes now on starting fresh and working my way up to success. I now realize that I have my family, friends, and E Bay C who will be, who will always be there for me along the way. Once again, my name is Nucci Hr. I'm from North Sacramento and a paid internship, a paid intern in E Bay C Sacramento. Thank you for your time to listen to my story.
Following Dexter will be Chi Vang and Ci Tao.
Good evening, council, and my name is Dexter Nescala. I'm a paid intern for East Bay Asian Youth Center. And I was born in North Carolina. I moved out here at the age of seven, and I've been living in Sacramento ever since. Basically, I find youth employment and youth internships very important, as I myself have had no personal work experience myself. I found it very hard myself to find a job as I've been applying for the past two months as a senior, and it's really hard. But with a program like E Bay C, they've offered me to, a paid internship. It's helped me put a good experience onto my resume, and it's also helped me gain funds that I've needed throughout high school to help provide for myself. My mom and me, it's very hard financially as we struggle, as everybody struggles. I myself, throughout my freshman, sophomore, and junior year, went under poverty. I was homeless, and I faced the streets, three and a half years, and it was a very hard time in my life. With this, my grades fell from being a straight A and B honorable student to 1.3s. I was ditching school. I was smoking marijuana, just doing bad things. And until E Bay C came along in February of 2016, I found just a nice community. It was a, it was a family. It opened up its arms to me, and it showed me like a nice place to be. Community work is very important. It helps a lot because community is where you live. It's your family. And without any youth employment or any youth internships and opportunities like this, it's not going to help us without, you know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Glad you're here. Either way, please say your name.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Steinberg. My name is Ci Tao and I am a part of E Bay C Sacramento. I have grown up around 41st South Sacramento where cops patrolling on, around a regular thing. Gunshots every night were common in our neighborhood. And I thought it was common in every neighborhood. I thought I wasn't the only one who was used to seeing this. Well, I was right about one thing. I wasn't the only one who was used to seeing this. Getting older, I heard about programs that weren't provided for me because I don't live in a specific area and I'm not able to get those resources. Neither was I aware of opportunities that were surrounded to me due to lack of outreach and not being educated on what those programs were. Not knowing what those programs were provided for me, it led me astray onto a path that I wish I never walked on that path. But opening up those beacon centers and having outreach groups to educate the youths will give the youths opportunities, give them a path to a successful future, and will benefit society and many families themselves. Just like how E Bay C reached out to me and opened up opportunities like internships, a family, and a home. I will, part of being E Bay C, it made me want to go to college and made me open up a career path of wanting to become a social worker. Providing 1,500 jobs for juniors and seniors would give them an opportunity to rethink about their future. The youth should be given opportunities to prepare themselves for their futures instead of preparing on how they're going to survive the next day. Thank you very much.
You're on your way. You're well on your way.
Following Chi Vang will be Cassandra Jennings and then Bridget Alexander.
Hello, everyone. My name is Chi Vang and I'm a youth intern for E Bay C Sacramento from District 2, attending Grant Union High School. My personal story leading up to why I strongly and highly want the Children's Fund to pass is because unlike many youths that just spoke, I wasn't born here in the United States. I was born, I am a Monge boy who was born in a refugee camp in Thailand, living three years in Thailand, in the camp. It showed that I had lived through poverty and I couldn't get what I want to eat, I couldn't get what I want to wear, and I couldn't get what I want to play with. Coming to the United States, I see that many people struggle the same as me. Throughout my years of being in Sacramento in the Del Paso area, I saw that many youths are motivated to come to school. A factor contributing to their school absences is because their families are low incomes. Money affects us all. With money being a problem, this causes all youths to be stressed, lost, confused, and where to go in life. Because really, you can't go far if you have little money or no money in life. With them in this situation, there aren't any much programs that reaches out to them and pulls them to the program. So they get into drugs, stealing, and doing what they can in order to get money and survive. I believe that if there are more programs like E Bay C that reaches out to the youth and helps them, and help them with school, and give them the knowledge onto how to survive in the world, then the crimes, crime rate and dropout rates by teenagers would decrease effectively. Life is 10% what happens to you, but 90% of it is how we react to it. Thank you all.
Is Jennings, what's your story?
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the council, and congratulations, Howard. A great appointment. I look forward to working for you. Speaking of stories, I only have the stories of the young people that we hear every day. We did bring a row of young people that we work with at the Greater Sacramento Urban League. But after hearing the stories here, I want to make it clear that I think, as I read your report, we're all supportive of paid internships, work experience. We at the Urban League work with them every day. What I don't see in your report, and I want to make sure that it's emphasized, that it is a partnership effort with the nonprofits and the community development, the community-based organizations. Because I think many students are left behind or not reached. And since I've been in the, in sort of the nonprofit world, I've seen where we're able to work with people in the community to really reach the young people. So while you are thinking about realign, aligning your departments, which I think are important, and in reading your report, I just want to make sure that the partnership and the collaboration is there because if we're going to win, we all need to move forward together. And so I see institutions mentioned, I see the school districts mentioned, I see the city staff, and I see other entities. But I also saw that you'll be working with a multi-team to work with the nonprofits. But you can see from the testimonies that you've heard and that the stories that we hear every day, that if we all are working to really reach and providing sort of comprehensive services so that all youth can succeed, I think it'll be worth it. So I am certainly applaud all the efforts. I'm supportive of the youth department. I am very much interested in collaboration because all together we win. So thank you.
Let me just say, I just need to pick up on that point because Cassandra Jennings, of course, has been on both sides of this here. And it's an absolutely important reminder that the nonprofit community is not at arm's length with the city, you know, just negotiating how we might spend our money. We're partners here. We need to make sure, as Jay and others have talked about, that we have standards and we are data and evaluation driven. But this isn't just about more city money for city programs. We have to figure out the right formula to ensure that we're investing in our nonprofit organizations that do the same work and in many instances, do it better than the way government does it. So thank you for the reminder.
My name is Bridget Alexander. I'm the executive director of Waking the Village, we're a nonprofit, and thanks for the kind words there. And we also work with youth at Tubman House, where we serve homeless youth. We also work with children at Art Beast and Creation District. So we work with kids 0 to 25. And I just want to say, we unequivocally support starting a Department of Youth. Everything this stands for, we're behind. The Beacon Schools are a tremendous idea. I'm a former high school teacher, and I couldn't agree more that getting in there early and having something in the schools, and then also working with the nonprofits to make sure that those that get disconnected stay, get reconnected and connected. So I'm just, that's all I've got to say. The youth are rocking it tonight. Let's give them the microphone and thank you.
We have Noah Alvarez, Sheila Boxley, Stacy Anderson, and then Andrea Tafoya.
Hi. My name is Noah Alvarez. I'm a leadership member at the Greenhouse. I've been involved in the Greenhouse for over three years now, and it's amazing to have a connection with a program that is really supportive. For example, I've been helped academically, spiritually, emotionally, and it's helping me prepare for my future life, which I hope to become a chef. I'm here to tell you why I think this is very important for our communities in Sacramento. We have to help our kids realize that they can do anything in life. These kids might feel hopeless, but we know that they're not, and we can make a difference. The city council can make a difference by helping fund into these programs that can give hope for our children and teens to succeed in the future and help them make their life goals a reality and not a fantasy. So I just ask, please make this happen. Together, we are more than together. We can fight to make it right for children and teens because education means everything and not everyone can do it alone. We have the ability to give the support, sorry, we have the ability to give the support to help our kids and teens improve in many ways, but it's not always free. So I think this can be a great change for our programs and our communities around Sacramento. This is our chance to make a difference by giving those who are in need of these amazing programs. I know what it's like to go, to go down the wrong path, and I don't want the next generation to make the same mistakes I did. We want our teens and kids to dream big and keep going on and on in life. We want kids to take our places once they grow, including my younger brothers and sisters. I hope that I can see the next generation have more opportunities just the way I have. The city council can make all these goals happen with the support of the funding into our programs because I know it takes hard work and a lot of money to run these programs. These funds can make a change in young people's lives. Hopefully, the city council can make this happen. Thank you for having me here this evening, and I believe that the city council members can make a difference and will take action and start changing people's lives.
Good afternoon, good evening, pardon me. I'm Sheila Boxley, the president and CEO of the Child Abuse Prevention Center. And on behalf of the center, we want to say that we're in full support of this proposal and ready and willing to help in the planning process. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stacy Anderson with Pro Youth and Families, formerly known as People Reaching Out. We've been doing this work for 35 years and plan on doing it for a long time, and we are in full support of this department.
Thank you again very much.
Andrea?
Good evening. My name is Andrea Tafoya, also with Pro Youth and Families. But I just want to say, I am, last May, I was fortunate enough to become a first-generation college grad. Sing yourself. But in order for me to, to kind of get to that point, I had the support of a lot of nonprofits. I had the opportunity to receive a lot of internships and get that work experience. And so I'm here today to say that I support the establishment of the youth department. So thank you.
Next, we have Yasenia Gonzalez, Lisette Lemay, and then Richard Nelson. And there's one with no name, actually several with no name. And then Emily Bender.
If there's anybody with no name, please come up.
Good evening. I am going to be very brief. I'm Yasenia Gonzalez. I am one of the founding parents of the Parent Teacher Home Visit, and I am just here to say that I am in support. I love you, Jay.
Thank you. That sets, that by the way, sets the record for the shortest testimony tonight, 12 seconds. Thank you.
Hold on, hold on. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. My name is Lisette Lemay. I also work with the National Nonprofit Parent Teacher Home Visits. And in the spirit of brevity, because we know who we need to hear from, I just want to leave, I just want to say this. These are all our kids, and we will either profit by or pay for what they become. So let's do right by them. By the way, that was James Baldwin, not me. Thank you.
Following Richard Nelson will be Emily Bender and Jessie Archer.
Good evening. I'm Richard Nelson, Vice President of the Hawk Institute. We're here in support of the youth initiative. I want to commend the council on thinking, forward-thinking. Without these young people, we're in trouble. We work with them every day. I think what's needed is hope and a vision, and I hope that the effort you put together includes all of that, and Hawk stands ready to assist in any way possible.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Good evening. My name is Emily Bender. I'm the Director of Programs over at the Sacramento LGBT Community Center. I just wanted to say that we do support this initiative, especially working with special populations such as queer and trans youth. We do see a lot of homeless or youth who are experiencing homelessness. And hiring youth, bringing them some work experience, developing some soft skills are all really important for all our youth. But our population, the LGBTQ youth are one, is a population that too many times they're overlooked. So thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Jessie?
Who's that?
Jessie Archer.
Jessie Archer.
Following Jessie will be Chaveng.
All right. Thank you so much for being here tonight. I just wanted to go over a few things. I'm so glad to hear that you're interested in having data and evaluations around these programs. But too often, LGBT youth are not collected in this data. So I hope that in the future, queer youth can be represented in data. Not only that, these services must be LGBT-affirming. Particularly, our transgender and gender nonconforming youth do not feel comfortable using services that are not affirming to their identity, and they have a lot of trouble finding services that meet their needs. Another issue that our youth are facing are alcohol and drugs. I just, while sitting here to this today, waiting for this, heard that naloxone, which is, prevents opioid overdoses, went from $690 a bottle to $4,500. And in Sacramento, we're having an opioid problem. And I hope that services open up to homeless youth that are looking for alcohol and drug services. And I am here on behalf of the Sacramento LGBT Community Center as the Youth Programs Coordinator and fully support the youth fund. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming to test.
Good evening. My name is Chaveng, Executive Director for Monge Innovating Politics. We walk the streets and made phone calls to support the efforts around Measure Y. And we walk the streets and made calls to support Measure G. And we will continue to walk the streets, make calls, to support initiatives that address disparities impacting youth throughout Sacramento. Thank you for your leadership.
The next speaker then is Bernie Goldberg, followed by Darrell Roberts, Fernando, looks like Sibria or Sibrian? Sibrian. And then, um...
We have six or seven more people testifying, so we're getting there. Mr. Goldberg, welcome.
Thank you. I want you to visualize Jackson, who was standing here before us a little while ago. And I want you to visualize each one of these young persons who's come up here to speak as a grown-up Jackson. They're both important. You went out into the county, and you brought all kinds of good things to bear for the capital city. The letter that I'm, I'm reading now is inside the booklet that I gave you. It's called California Cradle of Democracy. Mayor Steinberg, members of the council, thank you for giving me this opportunity to suggest a think-big project that will increase the academic esteem not only of Sacramento, but of all of California. In these perilous times for the children of the world, the best thing we can do for them is to show them ways to think for themselves, to encourage them to have confidence in the principles of our democracy, to bestow upon them some process of thinking that will carry them through moments of doubt that we all are experiencing. I am not describing civics classes where the three branches of government are explored, nope. I am describing an academic process that abstracted, performs the magic of lending structure to a unified paragraph, to the democratic process, to compromise, to peaceful transition of power, to creative response to information. We elect a new topic sentence in the White House every four years because the constituencies change, exactly the same way we fashion a unified paragraph, changing the topic sentence to fit information added or dropped. In the fourth grade in Sacramento, teachers are mandated to instruct something of the history of Native Americans in California. If every student in the fourth grade of our Central Valley...
Better wrap it up here, sir. Thank you.
Pardon?
You have to wrap it up. We have, we have a lot of testimony, but please...
Okay. I'm arguing in favor of stretching this thought about youth to our Central Valley. We are at one end of the Central Valley, and there are people throughout the valley who could benefit from this kind of thinking.
You've given us some good reading material.
Thank you.
We'll make sure that we read it. Thank you. Hi, there, Brother Darrell.
How you doing, Brother Darrell?
Roberts, how you doing?
Doing well. Mayor Steinberg, members of the council, City Manager, my name is Darrell Roberts of the Roberts Family Development Center, standing before you to support councilmember Schneers' efforts to establish a youth development Department of the city. But I also stand in front of you, asking you to really give consideration to the following. The last 10 years, while many of the cities and county services for youth services have been going away, it was the community-based organizations in our city and our region who stepped to the forefront and took the responsibility of providing services for youth. Even at our school district level, many of the school districts began looking to community-based organizations to provide after-school programs, summer programs, mentoring programs, and others. As we find new dollars coming to the city through the marijuana initiative, both recreational as well as medicinal, coming to our, our city budget, my hope is that those new dollars don't all find themselves to law enforcement or, or, or the fire department, but instead that it also recognizes the work that those community-based organizations have done over the last 10 years. As we bring money to the city, Mayor, you know, I've talked to you about it a few times. My hope is that we don't increase city services while not remembering those who stood in the trenches when the city revenue was not available. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, David.
Mayor and City Council members, my name is Fernando Sibrian, and I'm a community organizer with Mutual Housing California. Mutual Housing is a developer and operator here in Sacramento that provides affordable housing. We provide homes for over 3,200 individuals, low-income individuals, about half of them youth, and I get to work with many of them. Mutual Housing has hardened to see the city embark on a conversation about the, about how the city can best serve the needs and goals of Sacramento's youth. We urge that any conversation that takes place and any resources dedicated to improving the lives of youth include youth who are currently homeless and at risk of being homeless. Tens of thousands of youth in Sacramento are living on the streets, in substandard housing, in overcrowded housing, or in housing that they soon will be forced to leave because their families are paying too high a proportion of their income to make their housing situation Stable housing is a key determinant of strong performance in school, overall good health, and future life choices and success. It is imperative that a compassionate community, that, that we include housing and homelessness in any conversation about the health and well-being of our city's youth. Thank you.
We agree. Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Jim, and I apologize, I can't read the last name, but you're with Kavanaugh? Okay. And then, following Jim will be Yanina Casillas, and then the last speaker is Lisa, looks like Breitman or Lightsman.
Well, Mayor Steinberg and City Council, my name is Jim Kwachnick. I am the President and the CEO of Kavanaugh. It's a housing nonprofit. We have a few youth here and some other people. What we're doing is, we're creating a job opportunity for these kids through building tiny houses, which is giving them hope and, and job opportunities. We partner with some of the local builders, as well as BIA and some other nonprofit organizations. We're right now in seven different schools throughout the Sacramento area, and, you know, we're working to end homelessness, and it's, it's because of these, these students that are here that this stuff is happening. And so far, in the last five months, we've put four students into Consumer and Environmental College that these are at-risk youth that didn't have an option or an opportunity to do something, and, you know, it's just exciting to see. It's exciting to see them here. It's exciting to see that, you know, their life is changing because of just a small little program that we're doing right now, so.
Terrific. Thank you. How many houses have you built?
We have four built right now. We have five under construction, and I just added three more schools yesterday.
Are they portable?
Yes. They're...
So, just like Councilmember Harris brought one version of the tiny homes to City Hall, we'd really like to see what you're, what you're building.
And there, there is a kind of a small little picture there. We've already, we took a homeless veteran from, he was living on Arcade Creek. We moved him into the tiny house. Since moving into the tiny house, he's turned his EBT card into an ATM card.
Oh, isn't that a great saying, by the way?
Yeah. And all the, these kids are, so, these are some of the students that are building the houses.
Thank you, guys. You're saving lives, really. You're saving lives. I think, I think a number of us will want to come out, including the city staff, and look at exactly what you're doing.
Okay.
Really appreciate you being here and what you're doing, okay? Means a lot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Good.
Yanina?
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the City Council. My name is Yanina Casillas, and I'm with the Council on American Islamic Relations.
Care?
Yeah, I'm with CARE Sacramento. We represent the nation's largest Muslim civil rights group, and youth is an important aspect of the work that we do. And here in Sacramento, Sacramento's been chosen as one of the hubs for refugee, young youth, as well as, you know, youth brought up and raised here in Sacramento. And for us, we really support the initiatives of creating a youth department, and we would love and be willing to work and support you all in any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hey, Lisa?
Our last speaker, Lisa? Lisa? Oh, here you're coming. Sorry. Hi, Lisa.
I came from a soccer game.
I know.
My name's Lisa Reitzman. I'm here representing Street Soccer USA. Organization is, we use soccer to empower individuals and fight poverty through the lessons that can be learned through the game. It is a super cost-effective way to provide that kind of atmosphere. In the past, we've worked with adults in Sacramento transitioning out of homelessness and had some really successful outcomes, but most recently, we've understood that had those adults had access to sports sooner, they may not have been homeless because of how quickly they were able to adapt to some of those skills and provide them to lives. So, we've had the opportunity to work with some youth in Oak Park, in Jay Schneers' district, and had some success. I was a little embarrassed that I didn't understand how many kids did not have access to soccer. And in eight weeks, we saw like a pretty good transformation by just providing them the space to like run around and play and learn from the game. And so, there's some really critical life skills that happen through sports. As many of you may know, it's a really expensive sport, or it can be, and I think that every kid in our neighborhoods and our communities should have access to it. So, we're in full support of this proposal initiative, and we really hope that we can be a partner in making sure that all of these kids have access to sports if they choose, and the lessons and life skills that come with it. So, thanks for having us. Good evening. You're welcome.
Thank you, Lisa. Yes, there is one more slip from the Sacramento Youth Alliance without a name. Is the Sacramento Youth Alliance here? Do we want to have somebody come on up, say, on behalf of the Youth Alliance and, and speak? Welcome.
Very much for your consideration. We apologize. We wanted to see it as a group rather than an individual.
Oh, that's fine. No worries.
Yeah, thank you. So, I am Taylor Buck. I am a lead advocate for Sacramento Youth Alliance Community Action Team, and we are representatives, and we are a part of a local chapter of Opportunity Youth United, which is a movement that organizes young leaders to speak up and take action to end discrimination, poverty, and injustice, and to build a society that respects and protects the rights of all young people. So, thank you so much for bringing, you know, these initiatives to light. We are very, very much in support. Our vision is that we will have a Sacramento that will have the same opportunities for all youth to be educated and to thrive, and we hope that they will be provided opportunities to be engaged, productive, and obviously, you know, the most, the best citizens that Sacramento can offer. And of course, we've heard so many testimonies tonight, I know that we want to keep things moving along, but I would just like to point out that in the room, we have a clear support for all of these initiatives. We really want to ensure that our youth have the best opportunities possible, and we also want to recommend that youth also stay at the table as, as these initiatives are coming to light. We want to make sure that not only are the youth commission consulted, but other youth are public, and making sure that all of the organizations here and all of the youth who share their stories have a say in what happens as things go forward. So, we thank you very much, and we appreciate all of your efforts thus far. Thank you.
Thank you. To the Alliance as well. Terrific public testimony. We thank you all, especially the stories from the young people, especially those who have struggled and who are overcoming. Those are the most meaningful stories, really, and they, they motivate us. Our policy is just, and our budget actions are just, you know, numbers and words on a paper, but you bring it to life. Let's turn it over to the members of the City Council for discussion. Remember, this is not a formal action item. It is intended as direction so that we can come back and deliberate exact, the exact structure, more important than the structure, the substance around budget time in several months. Councilmember Gedda?
Oh, no, Mr. Schneers.
Oh, Councilmember Schneers.
Thank you. I want to thank you all for coming today, particularly, as the mayor said, I want to thank the young people for sharing your stories. You guys have been hanging with us through Measure Y and through Measure G, and these young people were making phone calls and participating in civics education like no other that we had in the city. They knocked on doors and did a great job. Can we give these young people, please, a hand? You know, I'm not sure how much I can add to their stories. I just want to put a little bit of a frame around this, and Mayor, I want to thank you for helping to bring this forward, and thank Councilmember Garen, thank Councilmember Jennings for working with us together, and we've been spending a lot of time talking about this over the last couple of years, actually. And I'm sorry it took us so long to get to this point, but we are at this point, and as the mayor said, this is now a beginning of where we go and how we can support our young people. You know, we have a challenge here in Sacramento. 29% of our young people live in poverty. That's really unacceptable. 21% to 27% of our young people are not reading at grade level in Twin Rivers and Sac City Unified. That's not acceptable. 40% of our young people are overweight or obese, leading to diabetes and other illnesses. That's not acceptable. And 15% of our homeless population are youth. 15% of those out on the streets are young people. I do want to say that we are working on one or possibly two shelters for, we're working with wind, and hopefully, we'll have an announcement on that later on this week. But those statistics, unfortunately, or fortunately, statistics travel in herds. Those statistics are just emblematic of what we're talking about when we talk about our young people and the challenges that they face really across the board. We, I believe, underspend on the support for our young people. I talked about this in Measure Y. I'm going to talk about it again. In 1314, which is our last full year of statistics that we worked with all of our departments, 1% of our general fund was spent on young people. 1%. That has gone up, and this council has added programming to that. We have done the Gang Intervention Task Force. We have expanded Summer at City Hall. We have programs that are currently working, but we're still probably around 2% to 3%, maybe 4%. We can argue about how you want to count it, maybe 6%. I don't think so, but you could say that's what it is. It's still underspending on our young people. We definitely need to think about public safety, and we had a, we had a conversation about that at Budget and Audit today, but I would argue that public safety, and I have great respect for our police and our firefighters, public safety is not just about police and firefighters. Public safety is about prevention and putting young people on the right track so they don't end up in the police cars, so we don't have to buy more police cars. We have programs, and, and we have been decimated by the recession. There's no question about it. I'm sure if you talk to Chris Conlon at Parks and Rec, he will show you and tell you how many programs we used to have for young people, and many of those have gone away, and we haven't replaced them. We need to replace that programming, and I want to say that that is a discussion around funding that we will have at another time, but we definitely need to increase the amount of resources that we spend on our young people. But as we do these things, and, and as the mayor said, we're going to get to another item where we're going to talk about spending another $950,000 to hopefully provide 1,500 internships for youth, and spend $500,000 on Beacon Schools so we can open up our neighborhoods and have true community centers as our schools, and spend $500,000 or so on increased programs. We can't do that and make it sustainable without building an infrastructure that is long-term. A couple of years ago, we put together a lot of summer jobs, maybe 1,000 summer jobs, which was a great effort, but we didn't build the infrastructure so that last year, they were gone. This is not a short-term challenge. This is a long-term challenge that we need to continue to work at. What we are doing here today, I believe, is providing some direction, and Mr. Chan and I have had many, many discussions about this, about what the city needs as far as infrastructure to support who we are as a city and to support the, the resources and the programming that our young people need. We don't have that right now. I would argue that we don't have, we don't measure what we're doing. We don't have metrics for evaluation, and we don't have what I think we definitely need, which is kind of an overall youth development framework. And I want to give you an example. Lisa was just up here from Street Soccer USA. We did some work at the Oak Park Community Center that they ran, and we had a tournament for the kids, but there were two other components of that tournament that she didn't talk about. The kids also had a leadership chart that they were working with, so that while they were playing and doing their teams, they were also learning about leadership in the community. And what we did at lunch was we brought the Food Literacy Center in so that they could teach them about nutrition. We need to think holistically about what our young people need. It's not just about rolling out a basketball and saying, "Go play." It's about teaching our kids the values that we want to stand up for as a community. So, where I think we're going, and, and we're not moving... We don't have that right now. I would argue that we don't have, we don't measure what we're doing. We don't have metrics for evaluation. And we don't have what I think we definitely need, which is kind of an overall youth development framework. And I want to give you an example. Lisa was just up here from Street Soccer USA. We did some work at the Oak Park Community Center that they ran, and we had a tournament for the kids. But there were two other components of that tournament that she didn't talk about. The kids also had a leadership chart that they were working with, so that while they were playing and doing their teams, they were also learning about leadership in the community. And what we did at lunch was we brought the Food Literacy Center in so that they could teach them about nutrition. We need to think holistically about what our young people need. It's not just about rolling out a basketball and saying, "Go play." It's about teaching our kids the values that we want to stand up for as a community. So where I think we're going, and we're not moving fast enough for me, but I will take this as a next step, is really to provide direction to the city manager, to our new full-on city manager, to put together this multi-sector team, and we have to include community-based organizations. I just, I can't say that strong enough. You are closer to the community, you know what you're doing within that. There are hundreds of community-based organizations that are helping our young people every day. It doesn't mean that we don't hold everyone to high standards, which is regardless of if it's being provided by the city or community-based organizations. It doesn't mean that we don't evaluate what we do, and it doesn't mean that we don't provide direction about the priorities of this council, whether it's internships or at some later point when we get to preschool for all or things like that. But we have to involve you, and we need your help to figure out how we do this. We're providing homeless shelters now, but we're doing it with goodwill, and we're doing it with Volunteers of America, and we're doing it with WIND Youth Center. That's just kind of a way that we have to operate if we're going to be, if we're going to be successful in the long term. Again, we're going to need more dollars for this as we go. We have few sources of new money, and we have many, many demands on that. So that's a conversation that I look forward to with this council, but it really is about who we are as a city, where your values are. Again, I have great respect for police and fire. We have a police department that takes care of our police. We have a fire department that takes care of our firefighters. We need a youth department that takes care of our kids and puts together the right infrastructure. Could be the longest I've ever spoken, but I am done, and I look forward to-
Every-
... direction. Thank you.
Every word heartfelt and the product of a lot of thought and hard work, so thank you. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't going to speak because it's not an action, more direction, but I'd be remiss if I didn't highlight and recognize the amount of diversity we had from all our youth here. And it's a testament to our city's history of diversity and how we need to embrace that. And also, to just highlight also how eloquent and inspiring these comments were, and to recognize that some of these youth here today have gone through so many struggles, from being refugees, from being challenged with homelessness. And yet, with all those odds, they're breaking through, but many have not. And so the fact that we have that here today that is showing that is something we should celebrate, we should encourage, and that hopefully, our goal will also be that we get more of the Andreas here that are sticking their stingers up, saying, "Go Hornets." Well, not for those Aggies, but, but "Go Hornets." But, but to make sure that that is our future, because the testament to a great city, I think, is one that everyone wants to raise their kids at, and we can do that by supporting our youth. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks a lot, Councilmember. Vice Mayor Jennings.
So I just want to start off by, all the youth that are in the audience, if you would stand up real quick, please, all of you. If this is the first time that you've been to a city council member, keep standing. Give them a round of applause as well. Last thing, if this was the first time you spoke in front of a city council meeting, keep standing. All those that spoke for the first time. All right, let's give them a big round of applause. Good job, good job. So I just want to let the youth know that we're really proud of you, because it's important for this council to listen to the voice of the youth. You're the most powerful influences that we have, because you know what we need to do in order to have that lasting impact each and every one of you. So we heard your voice tonight, we heard it loud and clear, and I just want to let you know that coming down here and talking in front of us and telling us your story, you could have dropped the mic. I'm just glad you didn't have a portable mic, right? Because you could have dropped the mic like nine or 10 times, and it was powerful. There was one young man, his name was Noah Alvarez. Does anybody know him? Noah Alvarez, you know him? So you want to tell Noah that we're going to coin his statement. Noah said, "Together, we will fight the fight to make it right." You tell him, "We're going to take that, and we're going to coin that." Because I do agree that nonprofits filled the bill when we went through that recession. They were there, they kept fighting to keep the doors open, to provide more programs and services, whether it was for the city, whether it was for the schools, whether it was for the general community. They did everything they could to continue to meet the needs, and I agree with that. But the only way we fight this fight is we fight it together. So Darrell, you're right. We need nonprofits, we need faith-based organizations, we need businesses, we need government, we need all of us together in order to make this right. So again, I'm all in, I'm looking forward to supporting, giving direction, whatever is necessary in order to move this agenda forward. So I'm 100% in.
Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. So yeah, first of all, great job to the speakers tonight. Really enjoyed hearing your testimony. The young people were amazing, but I really appreciate the adults that came with them too, because you do help us guide the priorities, right? So what we might be missing, or help us see our blind spots. Because it's a no-brainer to do things for the youth, I think the argument we always have is which ones first, and how, and what's the best way to do it. There's nobody up here that doesn't want to do that. And I don't, I agree with Jay, there's no, it is not necessary to pit them against fire or police. It's not, it's not necessary. We can walk and chew gum as a city, we can do that. But I got to ask the boring question tonight, which is, I don't quite understand what we're doing. It's not on for action, but there is action being taken because we're giving direction. So can, and I think what I'm hearing is, we're going to come back with a report that sort of takes everything we've heard tonight and what was in, what I believe came from your office, Mayor, or maybe a combination of District Five and Mayor's office, and give us some options on how we could move forward. But I'm not, I guess I'm not understanding what this body is agreeing to tonight by way of silence or just having-
Well, we are, there is not a formal motion, but we are giving collective direction individually, if that makes sense. In other words, I think the staff and my office would like to hear the feedback from the members. The staff report indicates that our presumption is that we want to create a youth department, but that we want to take the next couple of months to have a discussion with all the stakeholders, including council members and stakeholders from your districts, about what is the best way to achieve, what underlies all of this? Namely, how do we enhance our investments for and about youth? How do we make sure that everything we are doing as a city asks that question, as I said earlier, how will it benefit youth? And, you know, I thought, Councilmember Shneer puts it pretty eloquently, it's important enough to call a fire department, a fire department, a police department, a police department. You know what he said. Now, that's not to say that the name is everything, and we want to take the time to ensure that we structure this in such a way, again, I don't want to complicate it, but I'm interested in a broader neighborhood services method of delivery, like we did in the '90s, we've talked about that many times, with a special focus on youth. And I want us to be structured in a way that allows us to deliver in that way. So we're looking for direction, and what we're not, the reason why we didn't do an ordinance tonight is because there is more work to do. And I know you guys got tied up last time in whether or not to tie the marijuana money to the particular services, and Jay and I have had a few conversations about that, but I want to have a broad budget discussion come, come the spring, where we articulate a budget vision for youth consistent with whatever we choose to put forward structurally. But it's not budget time yet, except for mid-year, and we're going to take some action here in a few minutes. And so really, we're laying out a direction. We want your feedback-
Okay.
-about the specifics or the, or the general nature of the direction.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I think, you know, then for me, to see my one-eighth or ninth or whatever we are, feedback, I think it's really important that we find ways to support these programs. The structure of a youth department or division would be very different from public safety. There's no community-based organization that comes in and fights fires for us. There are partners, there's partners in each thing, but when you're talking about youth, we have the school districts and we have the county who bring big components, and I would definitely want to know what their role is tonight. It's nice to see Supervisor Serna here, but you know, we don't do mental health or social services, and housing becomes a challenge for us too, because we have to partner on it. So I want to make sure that those partners that have those bags of resources are at the table too, particularly the schools. And there's at least one school board member in the room, my. So we got to say it out loud, so we make sure that that expectation is clearly in place. This is not something the city, I believe, can do on its own. We don't have the jurisdiction. We have to have those partners at the table, or else the schools aren't in the room. We need libraries in the room, we need all of that. So from my standpoint on the report coming forward, Howard and/or Mike or whoever, I guess all of the above, working on this, Joe Devlin, wherever he's at, is show us how we best integrate youth services with whatever resources we could put to it, and maybe give us some tiers. If we embed it in our Parks Division, how do we get it out to the other areas? What kind of resources are available to us? And then, in working with the great folks in the room, what are our priorities? I tried to tally some of them. I think homeless youth, jobs, and, and youth employment, internship opportunities, and homeless youth really seem to get to the gist of most of what I heard tonight, and there was other things. But in terms of what I heard the most coming in, those would probably be some of them. So good on all of that, just bring us some ideas of how we do that in partnership and where we could best place it in the city to maximize the dollars. I also don't want to spend all of our money on administration. I don't want to pay for a whole department that requires us to get a whole bunch of people that work in the department. I want to figure out how we get the money out, because this is the benefit of not being the fiduciary entity. How do we get that money out to the schools and out to the partners and out to the CBOs? We don't need to do Boys and Girls Club, let Boys and Girls Club do Boys and Girls Club, let's get them the money to do it. We don't need, you know, to recreate what you're doing, we need to get you money so you can do more of it. So that, I'm interested in making sure our structure supports funneling that money out, which is very different than other departments in the city where, you know, we try to make sure we have maintenance and upkeep and all those things. So that would be my two cents, and I'll look forward to hearing this item when it comes back for the record. I think you will get a better product because of the iterations that we've gone through to get to this point, so kudos to you, Mr. Shneer, for championing it this far.
And some of the questions you raised specifically about partners and matching approach, we're going to see in Item 29 in a couple of minutes, because that's how we, that's how we lay out some of the initial investments. But very good comments, especially the one I want to reiterate too, about we're not trying to create more, more bureaucracy, and we're, since the word, right? We either want to collapse, combine, integrate, but the focus, we want more of a focus on youth and youth development. That's clear. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Ashby, thank you for your comments. They certainly mirror the things that I was going to say, so I won't reiterate. When I was a kid, I grew up in Los Angeles, and at that time, the school district was very robust and well-funded. We had shop classes, we had music classes, and these kind of things gave us a lot of opportunities that I'm not seeing that youth in Sacramento can avail themselves of. You know, in my particular experience, I went through shop class, particularly wood shop, for five years. And when I came out of that program, I was a really good woodworker. And it actually changed the course of my life. I ended up becoming a general contractor, and I've built a lot of houses. So what I'm getting at is that opportunity at the right moment can determine the course of a life. And I would say and agree with Councilmember Shneer that we are not providing the opportunities that I certainly enjoyed when I was young, and that we have to focus more on this. I absolutely agree with the need. The need was shown clearly here by the youth who spoke. You know, it's that opportunity at the right moment. We have great providers here in the room in Sacramento. We have wonderful nonprofit providers. We also have had in the past very robust programs in our youth department and the Department of Parks and Recreation. So you've asked for some direction, you know, when, and I appreciate that the discussion about building the youth department is really open to discussion. That's a very important piece. I would like to use the Department of Parks and Rec as maybe a starting point, but I'm very open to discussing how this youth department presents itself. And you said yourself earlier that finding the right balance between city programs and private nonprofits is what we're striving for, and we have to do that as well. The last thing I'd like to say, well, there's two more things. The metrics are very important also. Jay, you know, I lodge you for understanding that completely, that we can't just throw money at the idea of supporting youth, it has to have measurable outcomes. And I believe we can get there. I think we can demonstrate that we can create outcomes for our youth that'll be extremely positive. And again, the broader budget discussion. You know, we had some differences, Jay and I, on that piece in the past, but I think that we can get past that. It's very clear that we need to have this discussion about a youth department and ways to create those opportunities for youth, and as you said, to have it reflect our values. You know, what does the city value? Clearly, if we don't support our youth, we're not supporting our city adequately. So I look forward to some of the creative ideas coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As usual, Councilwoman Ashby is right on with my thinking. She mentioned many of the points that I was going to mention. I am sensitive to this overhead issue. It seems in the city, every time we've seen a problem, we've thrown another staff person at it, and we've built up a little bit of a bureaucracy. And I think we need to be careful with doing that on this item. I know Jay's worked on this very hard, and I'm in full agreement that we should move forward with looking at this. But the most important piece of it to me is not the department or Rec Services or where it might end up, is clearly defining what it is we're trying to do. What outcome are we looking for? And then move back into what organization needs to support that particular outcome. So I look forward to the group getting together and tackling that. What is the outcome? I want to recognize a couple of people. Mr. Richard Nelson was here, who works in the district very hard, he's back there. Keith Herron with Target Excellence, Darrell Roberts, who have worked for so long on the shoestring, trying to provide services to our youth, and so many others. I meet monthly, like most of you do, with the police captain for your areas, and I tell my police captain every time I meet him, "I don't think we have a police problem. I think we have a social problem." A social problem that must be solved through programs like this, through the things we're trying to do with jobs, to the things we're trying to do with Band the Box, to all the things that we're trying to do to uplift those communities that have been left behind. And if we can settle those social problems, the police problems become really a non-issue. The formula that was used to change Franklin Villa to Phoenix Park is this. It was first identify the youth, get the youth involved in programs, and then bring the parents in to watch the youth, to watch their kids participate in a play or a choir or whatever. And then we can bring the social services needed to really change a community. So I'm in support. I want us to be careful about the bureaucracy that we might create around this, but we do need, as you can see from all of the nonprofits that are supporting us, we do need a way to integrate this all together to make this a cohesive effort as we move forward. So thank you, Jay, for your hard work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing this forward. Thank you, Councilwoman Ashby, for saying what I was going to say.
Very good. Councilmember Hanson, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. I just want to thank everybody who came out. There are a lot of doers in the audience. I see young leaders who are showing us the way, but also people who are young at heart, like Mr. Roberts, who work very hard, day in, day out in the community, often thanklessly to help people in need, and some of the young people have great potential but don't understand what they can do. And I think that's the epitome of what the council's action tonight is based on. I want to thank Councilmember Shneer and the mayor for really keeping their focus on youth. And- on youth. And Mr. Carr sort of said it, but I think that in every aspect of what the city does, we can do something to move the ball forward here, whether it's on the library board, whether it's through SHRA. We have so many avenues that we can make a difference in, and it is jobs, but it's also education and the arts as well through the Sacramento Metropolitan Arts Commission. We are trying to do a lot of different things, and I think this is the right thing. So I'm very happy to support this, and I want to thank our newly coined city manager for helping to figure out a path forward as we work on this.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember. Back to Councilmember Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor. Just really quickly, I just want to make two points. I'm not suggesting that we create a Department of Youth that looks like the police department or looks like the fire department. That's not what this is about. What I'm saying is we should value our young people to the same level, that we pay enough attention and resource their needs in the same way. So that's a piece of it. I'm also not talking about creating a whole, a large bureaucracy or adding a lot of positions. I think that's the last thing we need. And as I've said, I know that our CBOs do a great job on the ground, generally less expensive, but they know what our kids need. They're in contact every day, and that's who we should be funding. But we have programs in our Parks and Rec Department, and I think, what, 1,200 out of 1,400 employees? 1,200 out of 1,900 employees work on youth issues within that. But we also have kids working under the city clerks. We have under our utilities department. We have youth programming spread throughout the city. And I'm not saying that all has to be in the same place, but it all has to work within the same framework so that we can make sure that we have the optimum end result for each of our young people. And I think we need, what I'm proposing here and what I want to provide direction, is that we build an infrastructure that ensures that, that every young person in the city gets what they need. And you know what? If the county doesn't provide it, we need to step in. The county should be doing a lot more in some areas. I'll just say that. We have stepped in and we'll continue to step in where we need to. Because if these young people don't get what they need, it's going to cost us a whole lot of more, a whole lot more money down the line than if we give them what they need, what we provide for our own children every day. So that's where we're going. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm hoping that we, city manager, if you have enough direction here of what we need, and my hope, and I think we have a date of April 18th in the staff report here, to come back to council with those suggestions and options for our council discussion. So thanks very much.
Perfect.
And thank you all for being here.
Yes. Angela Lee, Councilmember.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just one last thing. I think this is important, though, for the city manager and for finance. When you come back, I think we need to make sure that we include any tangible items that would need to be budgeted, that we're currently relying on that aren't budgeted. I'm really thinking of fourth R start because it's about a $1.5 million ask. So if that's in it, or if that's a priority, then that should be part of the conversation. And then lastly, Jay included, or maybe Mike included, the program services of the sort of top hits that we do in the city already, and there's about 20 of them. Just if those are folks that you're planning on having around the table or as a starting point, like, for example, one of them is $110,000 budget item with 1,000 youth served per year out of District One, that's not general fund money. That's District One specific money. It's a program we, I built in the district to serve 1,000 kids a year. I think it's worth replicating, happy to share how we did that and what it looks like and how it serves 1,000 kids in District One a year. And maybe those would be the types of programs you could include too. So just from my standpoint, things that are working, like summer at City Hall and how we could grow it, and then two, any outstanding debt that we have that would fall in the same youth services category that we're going to need to address one way or the other, I'd hope that would be a part of the report.
Very good. Thank you much. Oh, Councilmember Carr.
Just one last thing, Jay. I appreciate your comments on the bureaucracy, but I really hope that the group, however it's formed, can focus on the outcome. And giving every kid what it needs, needs a little more granularity. We need to go down a couple of steps to really understand what we're talking about and what specific outcomes we're looking for in which areas. Because every kid, what it needs is sort of ambiguous in it.
I totally agree with you.
And I know it's meant to find out.
We've looked at a lot of what Oakland has done, San Francisco, Denver, other states. We have to start with the goals for our young people, and then we have to decide what we're going to measure along the way. So you and I are on the same page on that, and believe me, that's a part of the framework that we don't have today, that we need for any programs that we either provide or fund. Thank you.
Okay. Excellent thorough discussion, I think, clear direction. And we may have some iterative reports back here, right, before we make the final decision because we ought to be working at this as it's being formed and put together. Thank you again, everybody. Let us now move to the next item, which is, should be a brief item, and that's final item 28. Why don't we allow everyone to leave here for a second, hand the gavel over to Mr. Jennings for a moment.
Hello, sir.
We're with 28.
28.
Make public comments, we have one. Okay. This is item number 28. It's the Fiscal Year 2015-16 Comprehensive Annual Fiscal Report, the CAFR. We have a public comment on this item?
Two items, two people.
We have a report as well.
Yes.
Good to see you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Jennings and councilmembers. This evening, I'm presenting the city's comprehensive annual financial report, otherwise known as the CAFR. It is in print as we speak. The hard copies will be out soon, but it is in your staff report for your perusal. The city's CAFR contains the audited financial statements that are required by the city charter as well as state and federal law. It reflects the city's financial condition as well as the mayor and city council stewardship over the city's resources, and is also an important investment tool as one of the factors in rating the creditworthiness of the city. We prepared the city's financial statements consistent with generally accepted accounting principles for local governments, which are established by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. This year, we implemented five new accounting and reporting standards, one in particular, Statement Number 72, Fair Value Measurement and Application. Significantly changed talent investments which are held by the city are disclosed in the CAFR. The financial statements have been audited by the city's independent CPA firm, Baverne Tryon Day and Company, and tonight, David Showalter and James Ramsey are here, just in case you have any questions at the end of my presentation. The independent auditors' report that's in the CAFR conveys their unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion or clean audit, that the information in the financial statements is presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. In addition to earning an unmodified audit opinion, we are also proud that the city has been awarded the Certificate for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association for the 27th year in a row. The certificate results from a peer review of the CAFR and recognizes adherence with the highest standards for local government financial reporting. Along with the CAFR, there's an additional document in the staff report, which is the auditor's letter to the city council. This is required communication from the auditor, and this letter conveys that there was no difficulties or any disagreements with auditors in the city, which is a positive thing, obviously.
It's very positive.
Yeah. This letter also discusses significant estimates and disclosures that are in the CAFR. The 246-page CAFR provides consolidated reporting of the 300-plus funds that we have in our financial system. Also, the presentation of the CAFR and the year-end financial audits to the city council provides the connection between the year-end financial results and the budget plan, with recommendations for the results included in the mid-year budget report. The positive results from this year are well-documented and summarized in your staff report, but I would just like to mention a couple highlights. Major tax revenue came in approximately 16.8 million higher than the final budget amounts, and the city departments experienced positive budgetary results in the amount of 4.6 million. These are due primarily to positive revenue results and salary savings from vacant positions. Pursuant to the city council's policy direction, one-time unbudgeted revenue sources were added to the General Fund Economic Uncertainty Reserve during the year-end close, bringing the balance to $47 million, which is approximately 10.8% of budgeted general fund revenue for fiscal year 1617. These revenue sources were derived from two main sources. One is the final payment from the state for the triple flip program in the tune of $5.2 million, and also a disbursement from the county of $2.8 million under the auto sales tax sharing agreement that we have with them. Ground emergency medical transport and intergovernmental transfer revenue for ambulance service reimbursements in the amount of 1.9 million has been reserved for the fire department. And finally, pursuant to the city's budget resolution, 6.7 million of pension cost savings have been achieved and will be deposited in the city's OPEB or other post-employment benefit trust fund. And this deposit brings our assets to $24 million and will increase the funded status to 6.6 million of our liability that exists today. Finally, I'd like to take a moment just to recognize the fiscal staff of all our city departments for their good work in closing the books on fiscal year 2016 and helping the city earn another clean audit opinion. And in particular, I'd like to thank our staff in the accounting division for their hard work and long hours to finish another award-worthy CAFR. We are recommending that you approve a resolution to accept the city's financial year 2016 CAFR, and at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I think if you hold on, we've got a couple of public comments, and then we'll be back to you with questions. Good job. Thank you.
So we have two signed up to speak, Mac Worthy and Chris Andrew. Mac?
People, I don't know where you're going, but it's sad. Now, on this type of thing on the agenda, why didn't we have some youth speak to it? That lady right there, I could take a half an hour and brief them, and they come right here, and ask the question that you don't want to answer. But we saying, what did you decrease your deficit for that money? You didn't. You might have serviced your debt, but you did increase the deficit. And we see items come up like this, and nobody... This is what makes it scary. This would make the world go round, the money. But who can speak to the money? I'm not the only one who took accounting. There's some other people that took accounting. Some other people know that somebody here lying. The money that's going through here don't make sense for the number of jobs that these poor folks have. It just don't make sense, people. Something is happening that is happening wrong. And I would urge you to do something or show something that you're going to employ some poor folks on and quit lying to them a promise. Furthermore, with this type of a budget and you want to hire some managers, how many managers are going to be hired? Very few managers to 3,000 people. What going to be their salary? Somebody got to wait until somebody die before they can be manager? You're lying, people. So wake up and deal with the people. Bring this to the youth. Talk to the youth about what is a budget and what is a financial statement. These are things that help youths move along, help them in direction of what they're going to take in college. But if you don't give them everything, they ain't going to do nothing. I've seen 50 years of it right here in Sacramento.
Thank you, sir.
Chris?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Good to see you again. Mayor, I found some money for you. So as we go through the budget, we do the CAFR, we reconcile the funds, and we come up with the surplus that we have this year of $36 million. What we have, and we use that for one-time money, it's a policy of the council, totally understand it, but what we see from the graph there or the chart there is every year, we have a little bit more money. And if you go back, the last five years, we've had at least $9 million each year surplus. If you go back three years, we've had 17 million a year for surplus. So there's always some surplus, and it keeps growing. And I know there's different reasons. I know it's tough to figure out the budget. It's tough to forecast it. I know it's not easy, but we're seeing this increase every year. That tells me and tells the firefighters that there's some funding there for ongoing services, whether that be police, fire, parks, whatever. There's money there that we have every single year, and this year's incredible bonanza. But just for the council to think about as you do the budget coming up, there's ongoing funds. We need to make some adjustments and use some of this money, that surplus, and use it this July. Thank you.
Chris, I appreciate the point. Have you analyzed the impact of the PERS decision to reduce the presumed rate of return when it comes to PERS and its potential impact on our city budget?
No. Well, like this year, we have, as I think was mentioned, we have 6.7 million that we had in savings from vacancies. A lot of those, I'm sure, are firefighters. And over the years, the firefighters, at least, and I believe every employee group gave back and paid their PERS. We paid 12% to offset those costs. I imagine something like that might be possible in the future too, but...
Okay. I just, yeah, we want nothing more than surpluses as well. We just got to make sure that they're real and they're long-term. Thank you so much. Okay. Got a question by Councilmember Carr?
Yes. Russell, I'm accustomed to seeing an unqualified report. You say the report from the auditor is unmodified. Are those interchangeable terms or...
A few years back, the term changed. It was unqualified, and it's now, it's under a county auditor standard. It's now called unmodified.
Unmodified means the same thing as unqualified used to mean.
Right.
Okay. And who hired the auditor?
There's a panel. The city hires auditor. RFP process.
RFP process.
RFP? And was the Budget and Audit Committee doing the selecting, or how did that work?
This was prior to the formation of the Budget and Audit Committee, that we, under this contract, we're in the third year of a five-year contract right now.
Say that again.
We're in the third year of a five-year contract, so this is prior to the formation of the Budget and Audit Committee.
All right.
Thank you. So Russell, could you please describe the state-local government triple flip in intricate detail to all of this? Kidding. Just kidding.
I'll get that information and report.
Thank you very much. Do we need a motion to, your motion to accept?
Yes.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. The measure passes. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Let's move on to the next item, which is item 29, the mid-year report, and this is our final item tonight. Ms. Holm, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and councilmembers. I'm Dawn Holm, your budget manager. The item before you is the FY 201617 mid-year budget. The mid-year review provides us the opportunity to review the status of departmental budgets and operations, as well as the status of the city's many funds to determine whether adjustments in revenues or expenditures are needed in order for those operations to end the fiscal year within budget. The fiscal year 17 revenue budget, oops, sorry, was based on the information available in March of last year. Following the close of fiscal year 16, our office spent time reviewing budget to actuals for the general fund major revenue categories as represented. This review identified the opportunity to adjust general fund revenues by almost $8.4 million. Six and a half million of this change is related to the continued economic recovery in our housing market and the reduction in Proposition 8 appeals. As Russ just outlined, year-end resulted in 19.6 million in one-time general funds. With the added 8.4 million in increased revenues, there are almost 28 million in one-time resources addressed in this report. This mid-year report recommends the use of 16.9 million, leaving a... This mid-year report recommends the use of $16.9 million, leaving 11 million to be programmed or added to fund balance. Recommendations for the use of these resources address council priorities related to establishing the Office of Public Safety Accountability and the Ethics Compliance Office, increased code enforcement, positions to address diversity and employee development, increased staffing to address development activity and the expansion of neighborhood services. It also addresses litigation issues related to Old Sacramento, the boardwalk and the barge, and further cleanup related to Mangan Park. Additionally, this year, we had two audits that we needed to address. One was from our city's internal auditor related to a golf loan, and we need to pay back the interest from the general fund to the RIS fund for that loan, as well as a state gas tax audit that you received a memo on late last year that needs to be paid back to the gas tax fund. This one's kind of interesting. We're going to pay back the gas tax audit, but we're really paying back ourselves. So the general fund will pay the gas tax fund, and then Public Works will use those funds to increase their work in that area. Finally, there's funding to address cost overruns in the police department, the addition of four mobile units at the animal shelter to provide adequate space for staff and volunteers, and to address a shortfall in deferred maintenance of the roof and mechanical equipment at the marina. On January 24th, the Budget and Audit Committee heard this report and recommended additional items. They recommended $750,000 being included for the crisis intervention training that council discussed on January 19th for the police department. They also asked for $950,000 to be funded to establish an employment training pilot program to match the state's ETP funding. This will provide internships for our most at-risk youth and provide job readiness skills. Finally, they asked the city manager to bring back options for the city council to consider in addressing the police pay equity and retention issues. The committee also wanted to have further discussion on the remaining $11 million, so the use of the remaining one-time resources, the $11 million, has been separated from this mid-year action. The committee met this afternoon and provided direction to staff on funding recommendations, which we will be bringing forward in the next few weeks. In addition to the general fund, adjustments are needed in the city's other funds. Measure U recommendations, all of which are our one-time in nature, funding the purchase of equipment to provide all officers with non-lethal force options, the purchase of a passenger van to assist in getting police officers to special events, fraying up some of our patrol vehicles, and scope changes to allow the police hiring pipeline program to use these resources for recruitment activities and in park maintenance for the ability to use identified savings from vacancies for pest eradication and repairs to park grounds. Code officer and solid waste is being funded by the Solid Waste Authority, and then there's a million-dollar increase in Public Works to address maintenance or in repairs of sidewalks, curbs, and gutters. This is funding that would be offset with the gas tax audit repayment. Following a review of departmental needs, we are recommending the approval of several position changes, including transfers between departments, the addition of positions through the elimination of vacant positions, and an increase in overall staffing of 18.95 positions. These changes include the increased staffing and transfer of the Office of Public Safety Accountability from the city manager's office to the city council, as you requested in With the development of the current budget, approximately 1 million in ongoing costs were moved from Measure U to the general fund, consistent with the adopted policy to maintain ongoing expenditures at or below projected revenues. This budget includes the use of approximately $950,000 for one-time purchases. As reflected in this forecast shown above, expenditures are anticipated to exceed revenues again in fiscal year 18. To address this, approximately 1 million in ongoing costs will need to be moved from the general fund to, or from Measure U to the general fund with budget development. Additionally, the expiration of Measure U in March 2019 is quickly approaching, which is why the revenues are declining in the out-years. The Budget and Audit Committee on the 24th also recommended that we consider establishing a committee to start looking at Measure U and what our next options are. The general fund forecast before you has been updated to include all revenue and expenditure adjustments recommended in this mid-year report, as well as the potential loss of Measure U resources. Additionally, in December, the CalPERS voted, CalPERS Board voted, to reduce their earnings assumption from 7.5% to 7%. Currently, very little information is available from PERS to accurately forecast future impacts. This model includes a phased-in cost of approximately 15% over eight years, based on information that we've been able to gather. PERS will be providing detailed information based on our specific plans this summer. Exhibits A through D of your report include detailed information on the adjustments that are being requested. This concludes my presentation. We have staff from the various departments, and I can also answer questions.
Thank you, Dawn. Thank you very, very much. Great job. Great job to you and the finance team. I want to just take 45 seconds and see if I can summarize and put this into context. So we see the opportunities and some of the limitations. Bottom line, after all said and done, when you take the CAFER and then you take some of the things we have to do, we have about $12.8 million of one-time money to consider investing mid-year. And my recommendation, and I know it's supported by the city manager and the finance director, is that absent some compelling circumstance, you ought not to spend mid-year money on an ongoing basis. But if you have the opportunity to invest one-time, especially in things that are appropriate for one-time expenditure, that's a good thing to do. And so what you see here with the 12.8 is the beginning of an investment strategy. The $950,000 for internships, the $750,000 for crisis intervention training for our police officers. And then, in the coming weeks, you're going, we're going to bring back a number of items, some of which were discussed today at the Budget and Fiscal Committee. And the Budget and Fiscal Committee did recommend unanimously to forward to you some categories that we're going to refine in coming weeks to ensure that more specific when they come out. $5 million for housing, $2.25 million for transportation, another $650,000, I think maybe it's $590,000 for youth, to add to the, essentially, the internship and other youth development pieces. What am I missing? $500,000 for Beacon Schools, which would be a matching requirement with the school district. We need a little bit more time to develop each of these proposals. Rather than bringing them back to tonight for city council adoption, we're going to trail them so that we can bring back more specific proposals, but we wanted to categorize and capture the money to reflect what we believe to be the city and the council's priorities. So the mid-year budget's a little different this year in that we're not going to do it all one evening, but over the course of a couple of weeks, and that's fine. But we have some one-time opportunities here, and that preserves our ability to consider ongoing expenditures versus our ongoing obligations when it comes to the fiscal year and the budget beginning in the spring, July 1st. Okay? So that's the summary. Let's hear from the public. Mac Worthy.
Could we ask the question, what was new money coming into this city? Not no money that you raise fees, our grants. We're talking about businesses come here. What was the new money in the past year that we can see that money coming in for several more years from businesses?
Want to answer that, Ms. Milstein? I think that's, Mr. Worthy, I know it's public testimony, but that's a good question. Where'd the money come from?
So we are fortunate enough to see a big turn in our real estate market, and that is the, in our real estate market. And that is the bulk of the new revenues that we're anticipating, both in our base property tax revenues, supplemental and transfer tax revenues. And so those are the things that have added to our ability to be able to finance the things we're proposing at mid-year and have allowed us to add resources in the out-years of our forecast.
Thank you. Keep going, Mr. Worthy.
Wouldn't there be an increase in property value in which the quality of houses that you build here does not deserve that increase? Because the people not going to get it, a lot of property going to go up for sale here. Can that be sustainable for the future? It can't be, because they're going to melt out. You got to bring more people in. See, what is the growth of the people here in this city per year? These are the things that you got to look at when you're looking at real estate. When real estate here, you're going to see a lot of property go up rent here, that was the little houses like Oak Park, Deppus Heights. And then we had to look at the people that going to buy them. We had to advise the people that going to buy those houses at 30 years old. Those people would not have any value in that house until they're 70 years old. Tell them the truth. No value in that house until they're 70 years old. So they ready to retire, so how they going to get along? Tell the truth.
That's why we're spending just one time instead of ongoing. Very good. Thank you. Let's go to the members of the council. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank Laney and your whole team for the work that you do to keep us on budget and hopefully not over-budget. And this year is a good example of how, even though we have increasing costs from a lot of different fronts, including CalPERS, which the mayor mentioned earlier, but we have a little bit left over to do one-time things with. And I guess I just want to make a few points about that. Well, it's an unusual thing for the city to have money left over. We have tremendous needs. We have needs from maintenance backlogs to the things we were talking about earlier, the need to invest in our community. If you look at the overall amount that we're talking about versus the general fund, Laney, what is that? I know it's less than 10%. It's about 2.5%? 10 million-ish?
Mike.
Microphone.
Mike.
Your mic.
When we looked at what was available on the expenditure side, it's around 5%, I mean, around 2%. And on the revenue side, it's 6%, 7%. And some of that stuff, we knew was coming. Like, we knew the triple flip was coming, and this body explicitly said, we're going to use it to up our EUR, and we had a plan for that. So that was not unexpected. It's just that we didn't budget for it. So when you look at it compared to what was the budget number, it looks, you know, that sets us off.
But I guess if we're coming in 4% to 6% over in what's, sorry, 4% to 6% left of the whole budget, that's still pretty tight.
That is still pretty tight.
And I think, given all the different factors, we have labor contracts coming up, all these other things that we deal with, emergencies, and we do have our emergency reserve, it's not a windfall. I know it feels like one, because we haven't had money for so many years to do important things with. And we've tried to invest, and I think, you know, councilmember Ashby and I were just debating which districts had the most valuation increase. And I was going to bet downtown, and she was going to bet in the Thomas. And it could be both, but I think that that's a good thing because of how much we suffered. But I'm also worried, not just about PERS, I'm worried about what this Trump administration's going to do to cities like us that have decided to maintain our values and to try to do what we've said we're going to do for our folks. And I know that your staff has been looking at some of that. But I think as we get into the regular budget, we need to begin to figure out how we're going to plan if there is a cutoff of funds at a certain point, because I know we have a lot of police officers and some firefighters, fire member, right, that are funded through those federal grants. And then the final thing is just Measure U. We're clearly in a place where we're going to have to go for its reaffirmation by the public, probably in 2018. And I think that that continuing to show the public that we're responsible, not only through new critical investments that are one-time, which are responsible, but also through our high credit rating and through significant investments in the things that they enjoy, parks, roads, making sure that there's a safe community. I think those are all the things that worry me, but I wanted to thank you. That was a long way of saying thank you for not letting us get too carried away at any given point.
Are we giving the valuation on percent? Percent, I want in on that.
I think it's absolute. But, yeah.
You all represent great districts, by the way. Councilmember here.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd actually like to just reiterate a little bit of what Steve said. You know, moving forward, Measure U is our only pathway to fiscal sustainability. Quite frankly, if Measure U does not re-up in 2018, we're going to be in a big jam. So when I see one-time funds like this, I don't really see them necessarily right out of the gate as an opportunity to invest, although that's certainly one strategy and can be a good one. But I tend to be pretty fiscally conservative, and I think about, when I look at these budget projections, that we can get a real fix. It is not guaranteed that Measure U will pass again. And I have worried about that, and I vocalized that the two years I've been on council, when we get to these budget discussions, that simply thinking, oh, sure, it'll pass, is not a guarantee. And it does worry me. You know, certainly in my district, people have vocalized to me that we haven't been good stewards of money, and we haven't saved enough, and we haven't shown that fiscal responsibility, and they might actually vote to take this away from us. So, you know, I have felt that we should put $40 million a year, you know, a full year of Measure U and put that away with these year-over-year surpluses in the eventuality that Measure U doesn't pass. That's kind of the way I ran my business, and that's the way I think. It's just sort of built into my personality to be very careful and save a lot. So as, you know, we talk further about these one-time funds and where to place them, I'd just like to say that these are very serious considerations as we move forward and think about our budget. And I do think about it two, three, four, and five years out. And, you know, I put a lot of stock in what Laney and Don do, and when you look at their numbers, those number of years out, it's all red ink. So it's something that we have to be very mindful of as a council, in my opinion, as we move forward with the idea of using these one-time funds. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Member Ashby? Or did I press, Councilmember Carr? I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you got here, we had some raucous meetings about the use of force. And I just want to point something out in this budget that really highlights the process that we have to go through in order to get from where we start to where we want to be. When we passed the use of force policy, there were some things in it that called for expenditures. And now they're showing up in the mid-year budget. And the two things that really hit the budget hard are the crisis intervention training for our police officers, so they can deal better with mentally ill people and de-escalate crises, as well as equipping our police officers with less-than-non-lethal devices. And those things appear in the budget here. So we passed it on the 29th of November. We see it in the mid-year budget. The next thing we see will be a contract saying, here is the equipment we want to purchase. And then the council will approve that, and then we have to deploy it. So I know people think that we can operate in a split second sometimes and make things happen instantaneously, but there is a process that we have to go through. And the next item will be, as I said, will be the contracting for these things. And then there'll be sometime after that before they arrive, before they get deployed, and before they can actually be used. So just wanted to highlight, it is a process.
And progress. Thank you. Councilmember Ashby.
Yeah, thank you. I don't want to be too redundant from budget and audit earlier, but, you know, I want to say a couple of things at the council meeting, since that's where the actual decision gets made. First of all, the items, I think it's three items that we're pressing forward on absolutely need to happen. And then the sort of five priority areas that our mayor laid out for the council, I want to say a couple of things about that. One is, I think the basis of my agreeing to it today at budget and audit was really to get more information, because I think they're the right, I do think they reflect what I hear everyone up here say. I just want to see how they're formed. So I'm not all the way there yet, but I want to know more, especially on the $5 million for housing, just because it's a really big chunk of money. It's also a really big problem. Want to see how we can best do that. I also want to be careful that we're using one-time funds the right way. So some of the things, I don't want to create a dependency on a program that we can't fund again. And so my, and I know you don't either. So I'm hoping we can put that together. And then one thing that the mayor and I have talked a little bit about offline, and even before he came to the council, was I want to try to help you, and I think we all can do this, but particularly probably Jay and I, because we've been here through this process a lot, where we might be able to... a lot, "where we might be able to collapse things in so that we're taking something that is previously funded another way, and we put it all together." So for example, you have a very good idea about doing neighborhood services another way. And I think we can take some of the Summer Night Lights programming money and fold it in with that $1 million that goes out to the communities. That way, nobody loses anything, but you're not doing that in addition to a $1 million give, because then we just, we won't have enough money to get to the other things. And I also want to be sure when we, if, as we do this, and I know Eric, I just keep bringing this up, but I never, at this point in the game, I never hear Head Start and Fourth R mentioned. But when we get to June...
Start, you mean.
Yeah, Start. I'm sorry, I said Head Start. Yeah, Start and Fourth R mentioned. But when we get to June, the chambers will be full of parents in Fourth R and Start, and we'll all be scrambling for where to find $1.4 million to save those programs. So I just want to make sure that we're smart, that we don't make the same mistake, you know, learn to duck, right? That they've come before, and so make sure that we have that addressed, or that it's a part of this package, or that we don't, you know, wait till June to address it and we don't have any other funding for that. And also, I think it's important, and I know the mayor agrees with this, if we identify something like Head, like Start or Fourth R that we use one-time funding for, but now we're on year three of that same deficit, that that's not one-time funding anymore, that is an ongoing, like, that's the cost of doing business for that program, has increased by $1.4 million. So we need to figure out how we either put that in our budget, or we modify those programs to fit within their budget. One of those two things has to happen in order for us to move forward. And then, I think lastly, I completely agree with Councilmember Harris, who I often tell him that I'm the second-most fiscally conservative person on the council, that it's hard, I don't like making the, it's uncomfortable to make the one-off decisions at mid-year because I know there's so many more coming at the end of the year. And I like to be able to line them all up and see them. And part of that comes from being gun-shy of having been on this council during years of cuts and cutting between really important programs. I remember distinctly one time, half of this chamber was full of families with handicapped children who had programs, and the other half was full of people who were in a crime scene investigation unit. We had to choose between the two. I just don't want to get down to those types of decisions anymore, and to the best of our ability that we can push to plan out. We've done a great job, really under Jay's leadership, of setting aside better money. There was none when we got here. Now we've hit our first goal. We've also done a good job, I think, with things like libraries and police department of planning farther out on what large needs are, so we have a little bit more time. I just want to do that in as many areas as we can. And then, lastly, I want to agree with Councilmember Hanson, that it is a bit of a fearful time with this new administration in DC. And California is bold, and we love to live here, at least I do. But we'd be foolish to believe there isn't going to be some cost to that, or at least to be prepared for that, for there to be some cost to that. And I don't ever want to compromise our values either. But I do want to make sure we're prepared financially to stand up the things that we need to stand up in order to be the kind of city that we want to be. So I just want to make sure we leave room for that.
Absolutely. Thank you. Councilmember Gueda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't going to speak here, and I wasn't punched up, but since you brought up the issue of Fourth R, you know, first, I want to thank our Parks Department because they've been, they heard the message, they got the direction from this council that before and after-school programs are critical. And even today, there was a meeting with our city, our city staff and the SAC Unified staff to try to negotiate that continued partnership. And I think we're going to get a report on that, Mr. City Manager, on that. But, you know, to the point about whether we want to or not have one-time funding for Fourth R and Start, and if we continue to fund it as one-time money, then I think we should have during our full-year budget, and I'll encourage to have a full chamber of parents here to support Fourth R and Start again, because, you know, because we're talking about the issue of childcare. We just, you know, we just finished the whole last council meeting on gender equity, and one of the big issues that came up was childcare. So I don't think we, you know, need to, you know, be arguing whether or not this issue should be, whether we should be funding Fourth R and Start through one-time money. If anything, I'm glad that our city staff is being fiscally prudent and fighting solutions. They've done that today. But if it becomes to a point where we have to say that this is an ongoing cost, and we have to up our resources, to me, that's something that I'm going to continue to fight for. But other than that, I think our city staff, Laney, you've done well, and I'm glad, and everyone has put together, I think, the directive since my first day on the council, when we were going to zero out these programs. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for also including that, the Fourth R and Jay on Start as part of the conversation of the youth programs.
Move the resolution. Moved by, Councilmember Harris, seconded by Councilmembers Harris and Hanson and Gueda. Double second. Hera.
Hera.
All right.
Steve, Hera.
Thank you. Good discussion. And just last reminder, we will be back in subsequent weeks with more mid-year budget discussion, because there is about $11 million left of one-time expenditure recommendations by category that, as Councilmember Ashby pointed out, we are going to detail and then bring back to the council for action. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Abstained. That passes nine to nothing. Thank you all very, very much. Great job. That is the end of the formal part of the agenda. We do have public testimony, but before we do, I want to make one announcement. And I know Rick Jennings, after the public testimony, if that's okay, has a very, very important adjourned in memory. But I'd like to, before the public testimony, talk about a subject matter that some of the members just brought up. In light of the obvious, the recent executive orders by President Trump, one of them argued in the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals today with regards to sanctuary cities and refugees, it's become clear to me, as I think it has to all of us, that our city needs to respond to these actions and immediately begin analyzing all our options. I think we're very clear as a city, I know I'm clear as a mayor, that we are not going to sacrifice our values, we're not going to sacrifice the civil rights of people because of an unconstitutional threat. But as Angelique said and others have been saying, we need to be prepared. We take the greatest pride in our diversity, and we're going to stand up for any of our residents who are being singled out by this new administration. Accordingly, I want to ask Councilmember Gueda to serve as the chair of a council task force on this important issue. In addition, I want to appoint the vice mayor, Councilmember Hanson, and Councilmember Shneer to serve as members, and ask the task force to address the following. Create an action plan for the city council to review. Examine the possibilities, and we need to be strategic about this, of filing or joining a lawsuit or series of lawsuits. Analyze the most effective way to establish a legal defense fund for our residents to ensure access for them to accurate information and protection from any of the impacts of these executive orders. And consider updating our local sanctuary city resolution, which everybody knows was approved back in 1985 during the Central American Refugee Crisis. So that's 32 years ago, in a different circumstance. The words of it actually apply today, but I think it is appropriate to at least consider the potential of updating it. And I want to ask you, you're going to do it however you want, you're going to do it very well, but I think there are three important pieces. One is to meet with not only our city attorney, but with the attorneys out in our community who are engaged daily and already in these activities to analyze the best strategies, including other city attorneys, which Sanchez, I know, will help us with. Secondly, to meet with the community and the community leader, the community leadership, the Latino community leadership, which obviously you help lead, but others as well. There's the Russian-American community, the Muslim-American community, the API community, there are a lot of communities potentially affected. And then, third, when you do have a public, a task force meeting with the members pursuant to our, the public nature of our ad-hocs, now I'd like that to be public as well. And if you can do that all, Councilmember Gueda, and I know you can in about two weeks, and come on, and come on back, and come on back to the council, because time is a pass in here, and we need to act aggressively, but we need to be smart about it. And so, and all members, obviously, especially given the nature, if we do this publicly, hold the committee hearing publicly, you're all welcome to participate and attend this, okay? We just need to post it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I gladly accept that post and position. And I do want to say that we have had a lot of interest from a very diverse, broad set of our Sacramento asked to participate, not just the Latino community, but the Asian Bar Association of Sacramentos reached out, obviously, folks like Kara have reached out. But even today, you saw, you know, folks from Elmhurst see this passion of, you know, protecting all our residents regardless of their immigration status. And I appreciate the nature of making sure that we're public about this and holding meetings. Two weeks is aggressive, and we will meet that goal. And the only comment for, you know, some of the folks out there in the Spanish-speaking community, that esta ciudad está aquí para todos los residentes, no importa su tipo de inmigración y estado en esta ciudad, esta es su ciudad, and we're here for everyone in the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that task.
Very good. Thank you very much. Councilmember, let's call the public testimony here.
Okay. So we have 10 to 12 speakers. I'll call three at a time. We will start with Courtney Collins, followed by Pastor Gainesborough and Janet Fricki.
Okay. Yes.
Is Courtney here?
Is Courtney here?
I'm here.
Okay. Pastor Gainesborough, why don't you go first since you're... No, no, go right ahead. We're just going out of order. It's okay. You'll go next.
Reset my clock, if you would. I lost 10 seconds. Thank you, Mayor and council. With the $11 to $18 million of one-time additional income, I just want to mention that I know so many things to be concerned about, but a trial restroom for the 2,500 to 3,500 homeless in Sacramento, we had a six-month trial, we all know about it. The pit stop was successful. The only non-success was its cost. But its cost even exceeding the 100 grand that was budgeted, the 200 grand. We still have thousands of our people out there with no public restroom. Fire Station 14 is supposed to be built, and it's in the exact place where the pit stop Councilwoman Ashby had the heart to say, "Let the attaching or building it contiguous with the fire station was a good idea." I try not to talk when council is talking.
Go ahead, Pastor. Apologize. That's right.
Hurricane Katrina created thousands of homeless in New Orleans. They needed immediate crisis shelters. Sacramento has an immediate homeless crisis. We have thousands unsheltered tonight. The 11th Street Shelter only holds 40. It's good, but we need 10 of those. We need something like the Wonder Bread Factory on Howe that would house 500 to 1,000 beds. We need to spend one or $2 million of this unspent money on the homeless, which are your sons, your daughters, your children that froze to death out there like Vinny and Joseph Desjean Fournaud. And finally, 100 homeless students at Grant High School. SAC Unified School District has 11 schools that are closed with heat and air, industrial kitchens, restrooms, ready. There are not only 100 homeless students, as it was said tonight, 15% of our homeless in Sacramento. Out of 2,500, that is 400 homeless students. We've got to shelter them. Your hearts are moving in that direction. God is dealing with you. He's counting on you to provide this compassion shelter. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, Pastor.
Courtney.
Courtney, please.
I prepared something in writing.
Of course.
My father died right outside in only his clothes, with only a couple of dollars in his pocket. When someone dies mysteriously on or in someone's property, the next logical step is to begin an investigation. That was precisely what I did the moment I found out his inadequately clothed and sheltered body was found on City Hall grounds of all places. I was terrified to find out about the very legal confiscation of blankets, sleeping bags, and other sources of warmth and shelter from those living on the streets by the police. I was shocked to hear about the proposal of a $170 million upgrade for a convention center, yet no talk of one cent being dedicated to creating more shelters. I have been unraveling a spool of truths so ugly that it feels almost impossible to go up against such a monstrous system. However, I'm not afraid, and I will not back down. I will not allow my father to be criminalized or have his character defamed. My dad was brilliant, creative, loving, compassionate. He was also severely bipolar, and this illness caused him great suffering his entire life, and me suffering too. I am here to stand for my father, the entire unhomed community, the mentally ill, all oppressed people of the entire world, really. It's all connected. I will spend the rest of my life fighting this, if that's what I have to do. Thank you.
Courtney, we're very, Courtney, we're very sorry for your loss, and...
I appreciate you saying that. I'd really like you guys to get to work on what needs to be done.
We've opened, I believe, five shelters in the last five weeks. And it's, you're right. You're right. It's not enough. Thank you. Next.
Okay, Janet Fricki, followed by Lori Mendoza. Mendoza.
I kind of don't know what to say. I know our heart goes out to Courtney and Vinny. And as we know, there's a lot of other Vinnys and Cortneys. I implore you to please do emergency stay on the anti-camping ordinance and repeal a few things. One, if any of us were homeless, we would feel awful. And then, how it would make you feel if you're being homeless was illegal. And there are organizations that will open up their doors, some churches. We do have closed schools that you could maybe partner with that have heat and air. There are so many, so many options, but I implore you to please reconsider the anti-camping ordinance. It's inhumane and just, I don't want to say embarrassing for the person who's homeless, but it's degrading. It's just, it's wrong. Give people back their dignity, give them a place to sleep. With restrooms, just a thought, all city, county, and state offices should maybe be open to everyone. How...
Thank you, ma'am.
How the city of Sacramento, is my time up?
No, your time's not up, but I just...
Okay. How the city of Sacramento has, like, for restaurants, Good, Bad or Pass, have volunteer for restaurants and other entities, if it's okay for the public to use the bathroom, have a little sign that maybe shows the, you know, man, woman bathroom sign. Okay, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good points. Appreciate it.
Lori. Lori Mendoza.
Next.
Not here. David Andre, and then Kevin Carter, and then Wanda.
Members of council, David Andre. Right now, outside of this door, there's people sleeping in dirty, wet pajamas without a blanket or anything. My understanding is the police continue to confiscate gear from people. Park Rangers continue to confiscate gear from people. But right outside this very building, on the other side of this wall, there's people in wet clothes with nothing, huddling. There was when I came in here. I don't know if the ambulance has been here to take them away or not. Another thing is, there's a 74-year-old woman who lives in a car, and I've been trying to take care of her. And it's very difficult when there's no safe parking in this town. Couldn't there be a certain area or several areas they could rotate where people could park, especially the elderly who are homeless? They would have a safe place where people could keep an eye on them. The way people have to move around, they get mixed up... The way people have to move around, they get mixed up, they get lost, things happen to them. This particular person, something did happen. Luckily, the community came together and is mitigating it. There's a lot of elderly people out there, and there's women in cars with children. This is not a good thing to have. We need safe parking. We need more shelters. And we need to do something to help the people outside of this very wall tonight, the people out there. One lady in particular was wearing, it looked like pajamas from like three weeks ago, and her legs were totally wet. She has problems similar to what my mother did. So can we please work quicker to help? Thank you very much.
Mayor Steinberg, City Council members, I want to first say Happy Black History Month. And as we look into Black History Month, let acknowledge the history of those that came before us that paved the way so that we can better understand why Black Lives Matter. In saying that, I come here tonight with a heavy heart. My mother, who is 83 years old, has leukemia.
I'm sorry?
And it's acute myelogophers leukemia. Only 18,000 people get it, and it has no cure. While I was at the University of San Francisco with her, they did a bone marrow biopsy, which she made a contribution to the hospital in the study before making the decision that she wouldn't take chemotherapy. And she is now a hospice patient that I spend most of my time with, when you know that I'm, most of the time I'm out being an activist. She's probably watching me now. She likes to watch the City Council. But the reason why I'm here tonight is because Friday night, as I was leaving my mother to come home and drop off some mail, on Franklin Boulevard, I was, I had a patrol car behind me, and he followed me pretty much the way, and then he made his turnoff. But as I pursued to get to Oak Park on Fifth and Franklin, and I got in front of the University of Pacific Law School, a police, another cruiser was passing me by, and as we went over the speed bumps, he kind of looked over at me. And then, and after that, he turned around and followed me. And the reason why I'm saying this is because I got to the post office, and he was still there behind me. And so as I got out of the car, and I looked back to see if there was a problem, and he got out of the car and asked me to walk towards him, which I did, and he said that my car didn't, my license plate didn't have a light. I said, "Okay, what's the problem?" He says, "Well, you know, you have to get that fixed." I said, "I have no problem with it." But I just asked one question, you know, "Why did you turn around? Was that the reason?" And once I said that, it became into almost like an escalation.
I need you to kind of wrap up. What can we do?
Receiving two more citations for speeding, and then he said I didn't make a left turn.
Okay.
And I think it was all because I asked a question about profiling.
So can we...
So what I'm trying to say at the end of this is that I just gave you guys a petition because of what's been going on with the police, and I just asked that you guys review this. I have 500 signatures already, and it's very important right now because of what's happening.
Can we...
And I just want to say that, you know, it's about policing.
No, no, no. Hold on. No, no, hold on, sir. We're well beyond your two minutes. I want to ask you whether or not we can set up a meeting for you with either representative of the city manager or the police department. So you've communicated an experience here that I'd like to see some facilitation, some mediation, and some answers to your...
And I would too, Mr. Steinberg.
But that's what we're going to do. We can't, it's two minutes.
And because when I mentioned what I was doing, and I was coming to see you about it, the officer pretty much laughed about it.
Well, we want to...
And I didn't think that was appropriate on his part, you know.
That happened. If that happened, that's inappropriate. I want, I want us to sit down with the gentleman, okay? Okay, please? And get back to us in terms of what occurred, please? Thank you.
When we do it, I'd rather, I'd like to do it with my legal representation because that's what I have now.
Okay.
So I'd rather do that.
Thank you. Next.
Okay, Wanda. Following Wanda, looks like Braven Murphy, and then Anna Marie Ragland.
Good afternoon, City Council and Mayor Gerald Steinberg.
Good evening.
Last week, I attempted to call your office, and your secretary or whomever the lady was answering refused to schedule an appointment that you said that I could, I could call your office and make an appointment. Is that not, is that not true? I spoke with you briefly, maybe at the very beginning of your, you being voted in here, and you said, "You can call my office and I will, we can sit one-on-one and talk." I don't find it being that way. You guys are all here because people voted you guys in. I am upset about the homeless people that are dying on our city streets. We have youth out there. We have a crisis, homeless crishage right now. Why can't we do like LA did, or like Oakland and all them guys have done? They've called for homeless emergency and get these people off the street. This weather is not favorable to anybody that's on the street right now. We're going to have, how many more people are going to die before you guys do something? You may have four more shelters out there with 40 people, but you have 3,500 people on the street, Mr. Mayor. Do you think 40 at a time is going to help? It may help those 40 people, but you have 3,500 people. We need to, we need to put a temporary stay on this, a camping order, a moratorium on them. I'm not asking for something permanent. I'm asking for something temporary. Put these people in a place, even if it's tents. We need emergency shelters. We need, we need long-term, and you're working on the long-term. I see it. But we need emergency shelters. I'm telling you, if my dad or my mom or my family die on these streets, you are going to meet with me.
Brayden or Braven? I'm sorry, I can't read it.
Have a wireless mic?
Yes, we do.
It's just kind of unbelievable. It's like a deja vu situation. I find myself here two weeks later, and it's the same thing. Nothing's being done about this camping ordinance. I looked into every single thing that you guys have had to say about the camping ordinance, and the main thing is that it's not a solution. Well, it's just so frustrating because we all agree that it's not a solution. We all agree with that, that we want permanent housing, and this wouldn't be a solution. But what we want is people not freezing to death until we get to that solution. And I just, it's, I don't understand what's going on here. You guys have a chance to press the magical saving lives button. You could press the button, and you could save lives. And you guys are hiding from the button, which is so odd. I was guided to the fact that in 1995, Mr. Steinberg voted against the camping ordinance. I didn't know this. And he told the media that if it was faced with that choice again, that he would again vote against the camping ordinance. And so I called your bluff last time. I didn't know that. I really want to do it again now, and let's at least see the vote. I want to see it happen. I mean, I've asked it again, so it's no point in repeating it. But how many deaths is it going to take for at least a vote? We're hearing, we're hearing a daughter of somebody who died. Councilwoman Ashby says, "We can do better. Let's not turn our cheek to them." But I don't even know what that means. Not only are, not only are we turning our cheek to them, we're taking away their stuff. I asked my conservative friends the question. If you saw a homeless person, would you, one, give them your last $5? Two, ask them how you could help them? Or, three, take their stuff and/or arrest them? Not one of my conservative friends even thought that was right. You guys, I guess what you need to do is ask yourself, when you go to bed, go to bed tonight, a simple question. Can I save lives? The answer is yes, and you need to do it. Thank you.
Anna Marie is next, and then Mary Taple, McWorthy, and the last speaker, Jeffrey Nelson.
Anna Maria Ragland, thank you. Okay, as you already know, Vinny Collins and Michael Nunez died on the grounds of Sacramento City Hall due to exposure and sanctioned violence, which is the confiscation of camping paraphernalia, blankets, and sleeping bags via, excuse me, via the no camping ordinance. May their deaths never be forgotten, and a reminder that legality is not the same as ethical laws and true justice. Please, do away with the camping, no camping ordinance, even if it's just a temporary. Place a moratorium on it, unless you want more bodies showing up outside your door. Simple. We know that housing is the solution, but we have a temporary solution, and that is to save lives. And you've been asked, can you sleep tonight? Ask yourself that question and press the magical button. I don't mean to be sarcastic, but I don't know what else else to reach you.
Thank you.
You care about people. You say that you care about the immigrants, and I do too, and people coming through the airports not being able to get through. What about your own people? Thank you.
Great.
Hi, I'm Mary Taple, and I just want to say thank you very much for the shelters. And I think we also need a triage center. It's critical to have a 24-hour center where people can be directed to so that particularly if they're keeping tack pit bulls on the American River Parkway, that people can safely use it. There needs to be somewhere people are directed to. And also then the garbage along the Parkway could be cleaned up. Sometimes there's people guarding this garbage, and you can see it's just garbage. And instead of the expensive policy we now have where people wait until the danger is high enough that the police impact team get multiple reports before they go out and require somebody to clean up the garbage, we're not having it hauled off very fast at all. And that would help everybody. And I also have brought up the point before that the pit bulls can be very dangerous. This is a pit bull. I don't know if you can see it. I couldn't see it until it started to move. This was along Arcade Creek years ago, but the coloration of its coat is just about exactly the same as the dry grass. And so there's very big dangers along the Lower River Parkway. I really was happy Mayor Johnson, excuse me, Mayor Steinberg, what a, what a, what a slip-up.
All right.
But I was happy to hear you say you don't want to spend $170 million on improving the convention center, that we have a waterfront, we could do something for. But we always, also have a Lower American River Parkway we need to do a lot more for. And I would like there to be consideration of an aerial tramway and its benefits to the community for the Lower American River Parkway so that we could all enjoy a positive and safe view of it, and with reduced rates for those people who are city residents, so they could afford something fun to do, those people who are helping pay for the arena but can't afford to attend many things there at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary.
McWorthy?
What we heard here tonight is very simple. Tell the people the babies crying, they give you money. That's what you done here. That's a sin. That's a sinning. That's how you solicit that money. But that's your problem. Then we not saying invest in the parents, and the parents should take care of their own babies. And you wouldn't have no constituents, would you? Okay. When we look at the black people, how many black kids come here and said anything? But we got three black city councilmen here. Something wrong in the city, isn't it? Because somebody was bought. Now, when we look at the mayor says, "We got to do something about the sanctuary cities. We got to get funds." Black man resists the police and gets shot in the back, and you ain't said a word. What do you want? This is federal law, and I'm going to be on Homeland Security's side because I know what rock you hide on each night. Wake up. And black folks, you heard this stuff. I've seen it here 50 years ago, and you sit right here, and the only thing you can say is, "Aye, aye." You ain't raised nothing to help your people. You ain't raised nothing to help your people financially because of the fact you don't have the ability. What can an athlete, and a school board supervisor, and a smart person tell you in finance? Nothing, people. Nothing. We are not represented, people. Black folks are not represented. This is black history. Why didn't you call some people? Nobody. Nobody. Why is Black Lives Matter? When you say you not going, you're going to oppose this law, why couldn't the black lives people jump on the board too and say, "If you oppose that law, I don't want another young black man shot in the back, or we go to war in the streets"?
Jeffrey? Jeffrey Nelson? Okay.
Okay. That's the public testimony. Thank you. Council ideas and questions? I want to give Vice Mayor Jennings the last word here tonight. Is there any other council ideas and questions? Councilmember Ashby?
Yeah, just two quick announcements. One is Thursday night from 6:00 to 8:00, my office is hosting a, an online fundraiser for Safe and Sober Grad Night for Endercombe High School. I think this is our fifth year doing this, but the kids themselves, the seniors, make desserts and treats, and then we do an online auction with them and, you know, get them delivered and that kind of thing. And all the money goes to a Safe and Sober Grad Night for the kids at the high school. So folks are interested in participating in that. They can get in touch with my office or go to the website and sign up to bid on the dessert items on Thursday night. And then on Saturday, and I don't know, some of you may be doing this too, Steve, maybe you are, or others, but I'm going to be, I'm going to be a bartender for benefit at Casbah, which is 2115 J Street. And the proceeds, I don't know how good I am at making drinks, but we'll find out. And the benefit is for my sister's house. So we're going to do some things there to help with domestic violence and helping women and some shelter programs. So if you're not busy Saturday from 4:15 to 6:00, you can come down to Casbah, hang out with me.
Thank you. Councilmember Carr?
One quick item. This Saturday, we're having the Sweet Potato Festival at the Samuel and Bonnie Pennell Community Center. It's a great event. Lots of things will be on display, as well as some sumptuous sweet potato pie. Got to come out to get that. At the festival, the United States Postal Service will be unveiling the Dorothy Height Forever stamp. Dorothy Height was a community activist, administrator, educator, civil rights and women's rights activist who focused on issues of African-American women, including unemployment, literacy, and voter awareness. So everybody come out. Hope to see you at the Sweet Potato Festival.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilman Chenier?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a quick shout-out to two activities or events that happened in Oak Park. The first, Councilmember Jennings and I were honored to put a sign topper on top of 9th and 35th honoring Pastor Emeritus Willie Cook from Shiloh Baptist Church. And so two things, it was wonderful. We had most of the congregation out, and then, and thank you, Mayor Jennings, Vice Mayor, Mayor Jennings. Thanks for being there with me. I think it was great. And it's a, it's a wonderful program. If any of you want to see the actual sign topper that was made, I have a, have one in my office, and they're pretty cool, and it's a nice thing to do in your neighborhood. The second thing is, yesterday, and Mayor Steinberg joined me on this one, is we dedicated the new sign in Oak Park, done mostly through the efforts of the Oak Park Business Association. It is slightly smaller, but basically a replica of the sign, the gateway into Oak Park that was there, that the old streetcar went underneath when it went into Oak Park. It's very cool, and that's on 35th and 5th Avenue. If you haven't seen it, I'd recommend it. I think it costs about $170,000, and we got a lot of help from the city to get it put up. So thanks very much.
Good. It was great. Councilmember Getta?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start off by, we, tomorrow we have, I wouldn't call it ribbon cutting, but more of a celebration of the kickoff of our Southeast Sacramento After School Robotics Program. We're going to kick off... We're going to kick off the start of a after-school program for Tahoe, Mark Twain, Earl Warren, and Camila Basik. And it's a great partnership between our local schools, our city, folks at the Power and Alliance, our industry folks, because we want to get to young people and encourage them to look at other careers and not get this meth phobia early on. What better way to do it than with, than with Legos? And Lego Nationals coming in to help support this, and we're going to keep growing this. And it's just the start. We hope to encourage other schools so that they can compete each other, and it'll culminate with a exposition at SacState. So we're going to get these young kids with SacState engineering students, and hopefully connected with engineers as well. Next, also, on February 21st, we're going to have a homelessness services meeting at the California Montessori Project at 6:30, and it'll be to discuss, you know, all of the efforts that we are doing on homelessness, to give a community represent, community members and neighbors on the things that we have started to work on, the challenges we still have, and the more work we need to do. And this will be a great way for folks to come and listen to our city staff and our county folks on what we're doing, and to answer any questions. Also, on February 27th, we are going to have our first town hall on the Water Meter Town Hall Program. Tahoe Park and the Pocket were the first to start the water meter program, or accelerated water meter program. We know that Thomas has already had them since construction, but we've had them since after the fact our house has been built. And we were the guinea pigs. And so, one of the things that we learned in that guinea pig experience is that communication with our residents is critical. So the town hall is the first step of our utilities department discussing the metersmatter.com or .org website that we'll have, that'll show online mapping of when your meter will be installed. We'll also talk about your door hanger notices, so you know your contractor, your supervisor, and a contact number where in 24 hours, you can get a response. We may not be able to have somebody on the phone immediately, but we'll get a response out there. So that's February 27th, at the Coloma Community Center, and that'll affect both Elmhurst and Tahoe Park.
Thank you, Eric. Before I turn it over, Vice Mayor Jennings, to the activists, homeless activists who continue to come here to talk about the camping ordinance, I'm happy to meet with you. So let's meet before the end of the week. Come on in as a, as a small group, and I'm happy to talk to you about all of it, okay? We'll spend some time together. Thank you. Rick?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to, I want to close the meeting in honor of my executive assistant, Kim Lee Blackwell. Most of you knew her by that last name. However, I had the opportunity to marry her and her husband, and her last name changed to Polk. So we want to adjourn the meeting in honor of Kim Lee Blackwell Polk. And I'm going to read her resolution, because her services will be this Friday, and I know some will be there and some will not be able to be there, so I'd like to read the resolution, because I think it's appropriate for someone who served this city for so long and so well, that we read the resolution in its entirety. And so if you'll bear with me, I'm going to try to get through this. It is hereby noted that the people of the city of Sacramento suffered a great loss in the passing of Kim Lee Blackwell Polk on January 31st, 2017, whereas Kim Davis, her maiden name, Blackwell Polk, was born in San Francisco General Hospital on August 7, 1956, to her proud parents of Avery Lee Holmes Carpenter and Edward Davis. Whereas Kim grew up in the city of San Francisco, Pacifica, and Daly City, California, and after graduating from Jefferson High School and attending San Francisco State University, where she excelled in business administration, modern office procedures, before marrying and giving birth to her two beautiful sons, Avery and Marcus. Whereas Kim later relocated her young family to San Francisco, where she established her home and lasting career with the city of Sacramento, the mayor's office, the council in 1992, then with District 7 Councilmember Terry Costantis, later with Councilmember Robbie Waters, and after leaving for a three-year stint to the office of Congressman Robert Matsui, she returned to the city to serve as the executive assistant to then-mayor Heather Fargo, followed by working with Councilwoman Bonnie Pennell in District 8, and then finally with newly-elected council member in 2014, me, myself, and I. Whereas Kim was a force to be reckoned with, and anybody who knew Kim knew that she was a force to be reckoned with. With all she possessed, the skills and tenacities necessary to manage a council office, navigate city systems, and she was politically astute, had a vast array of colleagues and resources, was a friend to all and a mentor and teacher to every new employee who entered the city. She put on such projects as back-to-school backpacks, Santa Sam, Jazz in July, community egg hunts, the Veterans Day Parade, Pocket Parade, Matsui, Sister City programs, and many, many more. Whereas Kim enjoyed reading, collecting beautiful fans, and reading glasses, and singing and dancing, and enjoying her red wine whenever necessary, and enjoying quality time with her children, but mostly with her grandchildren. She had a host of family and friends, and her best friends, and the love of her life was Jimmy Polk, for whom she shared many wonderful years, and happily married to him on October 10, 2015. Whereas the mayor and the council believe it is proper that the official records of the city recognize this remarkable life of Kim Polk. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the city council meeting on February 7 has been adjourned in memory of Kim Polk. And be it further resolved that a suitable copy of this resolution will be tendered to the bereaved family of Kim Polk as an expression of the mayor's and the city councils and the charter officers' deepest sympathy. Issued on this day, the 10th day of February, that'll be what, it'll actually be issued, on this day, the 10th day of February, 2017, we hereby adjourn this meeting. In Kim Lee Blackwell Polk's honor.
In Kim's memory, we're adjourned. Thank you.
That's tough.